Hi, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the regular Planning Board Public Meeting for September. If everybody could silence their cellphones so we're not interrupted, that would be great. And if I could have a motion to open the meeting, that would be great, too.
I'll make a motion to open the meeting.
Seconded.
Thank you.
Aye.
Aye. The first item on the agenda which we've moved up so that Mrs. Corrigan, the member of the Planning Board, would not be here for it because she's recused herself in this matter, is Beach Plum Meadows 248 Moses Lane. Is the applicant here? Gil, my understanding is it's been some revisions to the original plan.
Yes, in fact, as a record Gilbert G. Flanagan, 21 South Main Street, Southampton, for the applicant. As a result of the comments we had at some of your previous sessions, particularly regarding the access and the alignment of the proposed road with the adjoining streets, we have revised the map, which actually resulted in the reduction in density of one lot, but we now have the two ends of Beach Plum Road aligning directly with Corrigan Street and Fox Hollow Lane. So that was one concern I know that the Board had, and we have some revised plans to submit to you. I'll have the engineer--
Oh, yeah, we have a public meeting scheduled for this?
This is a public hearing.
So you should announce that it is a public meeting.
This is the public meeting for, or the first public hearing on this application.
For the record, I have an affidavit of posting and an affidavit of mailing which I'll hand up. What Mr. Marinus is about to put up on the easel is the revised drawing, and we have multiple copies of that to submit. And as you will see, the number of lots now is seventeen rather than eighteen. And you can see the alignment of the two roads as I mentioned.
Let me see this.
It's revised.
Pass them around.
Pass one over to Bo.
That seemed to be a major design concern. Also, I know a number of people in the community voiced a concern that somehow this road would be connected to West Prospect Street to provide a bypass or through access, and that clearly is not a part of the project. In fact, to do that would destroy two of the lots. So there is no connection to West Prospect Street, nor is there intended to be, nor will there ever be one. Another thing that was raised at the informal discussions we had had to do with the proximity of the proposed subdivision road to the Long Island Railroad. And if you examine the revised drawings, you'll note that there's nearly fifty feet of buffer proposed between the railroad right-of-way and the lots to provide not only safety but also aesthetic protection to those lots. And just by way of information for those people who have not been totally familiar with this application, this is a request for approval of a now seventeen-lot subdivision, which we would submit is as-of-right because all of the lots either meet or exceed the applicable R-20 zoning district requirements. The property, as you know, is located at 248 Moses Lane. As I said, there will be no through-access to West Prospect Street. We also have had, since a question was raised, a traffic study done. You may remember that when we made the initial application to the Board of Trustees for the Senior Citizen Project, we submitted a traffic study in connection with that application, which dealt not only with the Senior Citizen Project but also with a so-called "as-of-right" subdivision such as this. And you had asked us to revise that report to reflect only this project and, in fact, to update it. So we have actually had Schneider Engineering, who prepared the original report, do that. And Steven Schneider, a principal of that firm, is here this evening to submit that report and also to give a brief overview of the effects of the proposed development on the traffic. So I think what I'd like to do is to, unless you have any questions of me at this point, to have Mr. Schneider say a few words about the traffic, and then we can move forward.
May I address a question to this gentleman based on what he said?
Let's let him finish his presentation, and then he'd be open for questions.
He did, I think he's introduced--
Well, I have some questions, too, and I'm sure the other Board members have questions. But we'd like to hear what he has to say before we start asking questions.
Does he finish?
He's finished.
He's not finished.
Presentation is not finished.
Are there going to be other people?
Yes.
Yeah, there are going to be other people. I have the traffic engineer, and I'd like to have--
All presentation.
Right. That would be proper, I think. With that, I'd like to introduce Mr. Schneider.
I do have a report here which I may--
You could just state your name and--
I could do that. My name is Steven Schneider, Schneider Engineering, Principal, One Comac, C-O-M-A-C, Loop, Ronconkama, New York, 11779. I prepared a revised report based on the new site plan, and I have a dozen copies if you want them. I'll get one to you here. You can pass them back. More, I've got more.
If you want to get them from the back, I can scan them.
Oh, yeah, I was going to do it that way. Oh, it's fine, okay.
Some up here.
Thank you. This application, as was mentioned, and the actual report that I did, I did it for eighteen home, single-family homes, not knowing that they reduced it again to seventeen, so the numbers are even more conservative, and it's really moot anyhow. Basically, we looked at the trips that were being generated to the site, to the new site, and we based it on I T E, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, which is the industry-wide standard. Trips that are generated, I have a chart here in Figure One. I'll read it just very briefly for those in the audience. The total trips generated to this site using eighteen houses, meaning both directions, when I say total trips, were either fourteen, eighteen, seventeen in both directions total. And what we did here to make it even harder or more conservative, even though there are two curb cuts, two driveways, I'll call it, going to the site and from the site, I put all the cars coming from one driveway, which is a worst condition, in that instead of having, you know, five and five left turns, I made it ten from one, which is even a worse condition that you normally would have, just to be on the conservative side. We did put a counter out for twenty-four hours, for seven full days over a twenty-four-hour period. The data is in the back of the report, and I summarized it in Figure Two. And we took the counts, by the way, between August 15th and August 22nd, which is a peak period for this area. And the counts basically indicate that there's a, and this is both directions again, one hundred and seventy-nine vehicles on Moses Lane during the AM rush hour. The PM rush hour, there's four hundred and thirty-one vehicles on Moses Lane. That's the evening, and that's all during the week. On a Saturday, we came up with two hundred and fifty-one vehicles on Moses Lane. That would be a Saturday midday. The percentages are pretty simple in that when people making left turns out, there are more making left turns out in the morning going eastbound, obviously, and in the evening there are more people making right turns into the site going westbound, which makes sense, all right? On Saturday, it happened to be an even split, by the way. Again, using the worst case that I had used here, we put it all into one point. The Figure Three shows the amount of cars that will be coming in and out of that particular site. The two driveways, in this case, they only used one driveway, and that's what the Figure Three shows, the distribution for a capacity analysis I had done. And basically, with all the conservativeness that I use, the all cars coming out of one driveway, the level of service in all AM, PM, and Saturday peak were actually A, which is the best you can get. Level of service, for those in the audience, is basically a grade to a roadway or an intersection in this case. A is you're the only one on the road, it's wonderful. F, everybody's on the road, it's not that great. In this case, the level of service going in and out of the site is A, which is pretty much the best you can get. So summarizing, basically with a degree of engineering certainty, the subdivision will have absolutely no effect on the volume of traffic going in and out of the site, nor on the traffic on Moses. That's the end of it.
Excuse my ignorance, but you talk about the un-signalized module of this program. Does that mean that your program doesn't take into account that there is a traffic signal there? Is that referring to some other--
No, it's just that this is presuming there is no traffic, in the worst case scenario, you've got to make a turn-out. If you had a signal, it's even better, because now you've got cars stopped.
Right.
What we did was we took it with no car stopping, let them just go through, and we did it just ultra-conservative case.
It is proposed that there's four-way stop signs in the plan, but that's not taken into account in your analysis?
Not at all. I just put all the cars in one spot, making a left turn-out with traffic going fully. If I put a signal there, obviously, traffic would stop, it would be even easier, but it wasn't even important because they're all level of service at A.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
There's one other thing I'll mention before I sit down, and that is that during some of the preliminary discussions we had before you about this application, I believe there was, as you know, part of what we submitted was a long environmental assessment form, Part One, for the SECPA review, and I believe that the consensus generally was that this would be what is called an unlisted action under SECPA, and that therefore there's no presumption one way or the other. And I think it's important that the audience and that the Board be aware of that fact. Unless you have any questions of me at this point--
I just have one question. Mr. Flanagan, a letter introduced into the file from the Suffolk County Water Authority. You're familiar with--
Yes, I am, yes, I am.
Basically stating that they're concerned that the eighteen-lot subdivisions near to their West Prospect wellfield would add nitrogen elevation to the groundwater levels, and they're proposing that you do build the sewage treatment plant, which you had originally suggested would take over one of the lots.
That is possible, and as you know, we have to work closely with the Suffolk County Department of Health Services. The subdivision has been designed so that if that is required, we can provide it. And if you look at the aerial photograph that was part of the Water Authority's submission, where they suggest that it could go is exactly where it would go. So if that becomes necessary, we can, in fact, address it to their satisfaction.
Before I open the floor to public questions, I just wanted, Patrick, have you had a chance to review this? Do you have any questions for the applicant?
No, I'm getting the material, see, Mr. Flanagan. So we'll review it and provide comments.
Orin, any questions? No. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions from the audience or comment from the public? Yes, sir, you were first to raise your hand.
Thank you.
If you could get up and just come to the microphone and--
Give me, I have a little cough, I'll try not to disgust you all.
Paul Newtholler, 90 Howell Street. Thank you for your presentation. You mentioned twice, and I'm sure with great relief, to the West Prospect Street people that live around there that you would not at all be thinking or planning to do things there. What about Howell?
Nope, not Howell either.
Is that the same thing?
Yeah, there are two lots. I think that's the same thing.
Secondly, I'm assuming that the Guilfoyle abandonment is still something, whether it's been approved or if that's something that you intend and hope will be approved.
Correct.
That is correct. So then these homes, if I'm correct, these will be the backs of the homes backing up to whatever is over here.
You're right.
Correct.
You're absolutely right.
All right. In building, let me ask you this, and I really don't know the answer to this. I try not to, these questions I don't know the answer to. What insulates the people up here from all the building and the debris and, you know, while you're building? I mean, is there anything that's done to, you know, try to keep all of that stuff from coming over, or is that just luck as you have it?
There's a perimeter of outside trees that runs along that, that'll probably be known in part of the residence.
Not worth it, what's there is there. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Martha Kayamis, 155 Moses Lane. I wanted to know if they proposed any kind of green space for the community.
Not on this plan.
Well, it's very common in the city and in many other communities that they do provide green space for the members of the community to have access to.
If I could say something on that, this is a standard subdivision. You see that more commonly in a cluster-type subdivision where there is a community area. There is a reserve area for drainage in the middle, which I assume would probably be landscaped in some fashion. As I also mentioned, there is going to be a vegetative buffer along the railroad, but this is a standard subdivision. This is not a cluster where you would typically see an area of community amenities.
I'd also say that the Village Master Plan does favor developments which leave some green space, and in lieu of that, the developer is required to pay a park fee for, if they do not provide that. And that might be, may be something that would be involved in this application.
Yes, but having them pay the village doesn't help the community.
Correct.
And it's our community that's being impacted by this development, and there's no green space, and there's no parks in that immediate area, that for anybody. So, you know, as I said, paying the village doesn't help us.
That's a valid point, but it's not the law. It's not required.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Abby Newtholler, 90 Howell. I'm concerned with the state of the property now because it used to be a tree farm. There are no trees there now. There are probably twenty deer that have come and infiltrated our property and several other homes in our neighborhood, and I'm sure on the Fox Hollow side, and as well during construction, if there isn't some, something built there other than a few trees, which obviously the deer know how to get around, you know, where do they go? Where do they go? What happens to the animals? And what is the property going to look like until this development, if it is approved, goes through? What will it look like? That's my concern. Is it just going to stay the way it is, is my question to the builder? Is it going to stay the way it is? Nothing will change those few trees that are there? Once construction starts, you intend to leave it that way?
Well, are you talking about the trees along the perimeter of Moses?
The kind of dying trees along the perimeter of Guilfoyle.
I can't do anything to the property now because I'm just a contract bender. I don't actually own the property.
Who's responsible for that? That is my question.
Would be the property owners. But, you know, the plan that we have right now, that, you know, they'll have houses along Moses Lane.
So that's probably next summer that you're looking at breaking ground? Possibly?
Possibly.
Okay, so it, my concern is, as the property is now, the trees are all gone, the animals don't know where to go. Are you responsible for that? Is my question. Who's responsible for that?
Basically, nobody. The property owner, but the property owner doesn't have a responsibility to take care of the deer.
Right, wow.
I mean, the duty of this Board is to enforce the codes and the law of the villages of Southampton. We are not here to get people to do stuff or not get people to do stuff. Whatever the law is, we are here to see that the laws are followed.
Okay, well, it disturbs me, is all. I understand, thank you.
There's a law that says you have to take care of the deer, I'm afraid.
No, I understand that. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Ken Weinstein. I live at 111 Fox Hollow, where I've lived for 25 years. While the much-talked-about shopping center on County Road 39 in McGee, which is outside of your jurisdiction, comes to pass, the Moses McGee Corridor will be a racetrack. It's now a narrow country lane, and there's no, nothing in this plan that accommodates the increase in traffic. The traffic study is without any value because it doesn't foresee future development up the Moses McGee Corridor. Therefore, the traffic counts, while exist today, they haven't burdened it with future development that's been discussed many times throughout the village and the town. This is a health and safety issue. Fire and ambulance access would be greatly improved if West Prospect were extended into the development, allowing clear alternative egress and ingress, if the fire station on Windmill Lane just goes up to West Prospect and across, it gets into this development. They've already accommodated the proper alignment, at least in my opinion, into Moses and Corrigan, which is a good thing. But as it is now, much of the traffic on Moses makes a sharp turn to go down to Pelham and then back up to West Prospect to get to North Sea Road or Main Street. This is difficult and dangerous, and it's going to get worse. It's going to get worse, not only because of this development, which I don't really have an objection to this development, but I have an objection to the West Prospect elimination. And the future impact of the development up Moses and McGee is not considered in this At the same time, let's see, the proposed pedestrian path, I think that's been eliminated. Has it? There was a sidewalk in the earlier plan that was sent to neighbors. Is there a sidewalk in there now?
No, not right now.
Okay, so there's absolutely no access, not even foot access to West Prospect. This gets worse. The representatives of the subdivision plan leave eight hundred square feet in each house site unbuilt. While they say it's for pools or decks, there's already a patio in the plan. I don't know a developer who would leave square footage on the table. Not one. You see what's happening up Moses, they're building them, you know, right to the limit of the pyramid law, right to the limit of the side setbacks. The houses are getting bigger and bigger. I think these houses will probably be eight hundred square feet bigger. And it's unclear to me whether Beach Plum is going to build the houses or simply sell the lots. That's unclear. Mr. Contractor, what's the plan?
The plan on building the houses.
Okay, so you've got some control over the architectural style and all that. There's been nothing presented in here. I guess that's the Architectural Review Board, not you guys. Okay. And then the question is, who reviews variances if they decide down the road to increase the size of the houses? Is that you, or is that ARB?
It's the zoning, the Architecture Review Board, it's not us. We're just here to decide how the lots get carved up.
Okay. While every development hopes to be a private enclave, one of the benefits of being in the village is access to such amenities as the beach, library, village hall, restaurants, and shopping. I'm sure these residents will enjoy, but wonder why they need to take an arduous route into the village, which can be remedied by access via West Prospect. I'm sure the developers don't want West Plum Beach Road to be a bypass, but there are currently very busy bypasses through the residential neighborhoods adjacent to this development. Your choice as a Planning Board is to solve a problem and not exacerbate one. I hope these comments reflect those of us in Broad Hollow Estates, which was the original name for Fox Hollow and Harvest Lanes, and those folks on Corrigan that are affected by this plan. Thank you very much, and I hope it's within your jurisdiction to require access of some sort into West Prospect. I'm sure there are traffic calming measures that can be taken to reduce the bypass impact, but that's sort of where I stand on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Nez LaShawki. I live on 196 Corrigan. So Moses is a street that I take very often. It's already, there's already, especially during the season, there's a lot of traffic on Moses. Now, I'm not sure I understand anything of what the gentleman just said. And I thought we had asked for a total environmental study of this project. Have we gotten it? Are we getting it? That's my question.
The environmental study that's required by law will be done, but it's not up to, again, to this Board to decide what type of environmental study will be done. It's prescribed by the state, based on existing use of the land and the proposed use of the land. I'm sure Mr. Cleary can expound on that, but it's not really up to us to say, this is what we'd like you to do. It's prescribed by the state what the study would be.
What I can say is that there has been some confusion about whether this was considered a Type I or an unlisted action. That's a classification on the potential significance of the project, and the applicant has clarified that information. So this is what's called an unlisted action, which is the broad middle category of potential impacts associated with this project. The applicant has submitted material to this Board, who will eventually make the decision you're speaking about this evening. The information is informational. It is providing the Board with a level of understanding of the concerns and consequences of the project. So you just heard this evening, the applicant submitted a traffic study. The Board will determine if that traffic study is adequate or not, or if it raises questions about potential impacts. If so, the Board has the means to require additional analysis to be done. Ultimately, the end of that, or the worst case or best case, depending on how you look at that, is an environmental impact statement. That's not a requirement in this instance, but it is a tool to help this Board make its decision. Eventually, the Board will determine if that's the appropriate tool or not, based on what the applicant gives the Board. So the decision hasn't been made yet, but at some point in time, you'll be well aware of how the Board will be handling its determination.
Any further input? Yes, sir.
Vincent Skobinski, 76 Fox Hollow Lane. My first question is, what would necessi-- talked about, you know, the two hundred, twenty-thousand-square-foot lots and the forty-thousand-square-foot lots. And what, and then the sewage treatment plant, so what, my question to the applicant is, what would necessitate a sewage treatment plant? What would trigger it? What if--
Basically, that's Board of Health, isn't it, Patrick?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And if, so the Board of Health would rule whether a sewage treatment plant is required or not?
Correct.
Okay. And if the sewage treatment plan were required, where would it go?
Right here, on Seventeen on the northwest corner.
And then the Guilfoyle Street abandonment, what does that mean? Because I know there are homeowners on Guilfoyle Street, so if that's to be abandoned, how does that affect the homeowners on Guilfoyle Street?
If I can, we, for those that require access on Guilfoyle Street that don't have frontage on another street, we would work out an easement arrangement, so it wouldn't be a road, it would be an easement.
Oh, so Guilfoyle Street would still, the pathway would still exist, but there would be an easement?
It would be an easement, it would not be a street. Correct.
And what is, what does an easement mean?
It would give just those people that needed it the right to use it, it wouldn't be open to the general public.
Okay, fine. Thank you very much. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hillary Hart, 218 Corrigan. I have a question. With the Board of Health, with the one-acre zoning, what, what does the applicant have to do to negate the ten houses or one-acre zoning on that? Is it, is it, are TDRs included, or is it just--
No, it is, it is not a transfer of development right proposal the applicant's talking about.
Okay.
This is a, this is a infrastructural opportunity that the Health Department can afford the applicant in this particular instance. The applicant's not buying a development right and bringing it to this property. It's a different, it's a slightly, similar concept, but slightly different in the way it's administered.
So are the TDRs-- So are the TDRs, can they use them? Or is it just they have to have a sewage plant or get a variance?
Right, so if the treatment plant is provided--
Right.
--that no longer is a requirement.
Okay. But the only option they have is the treatment plant or--
It seems as though now you're hearing that the treatment plant is something that other agencies are suggesting needs to be provided in this instance.
Okay, okay. And, and just because of all of the, because it is 17 or 18, are any of the lots, are any of them on Moses now? Do they enter on Moses, or do they enter on the interior? Are any of the lots have their driveways on Moses Lane?
Yeah, 15, 14, and 10.
So three lots have their driveways on Moses? My other question would be, just because there are all these questions in regard to this, if, if you were to do a Type 1, that's something you would seriously consider possibly, and any environmental issues on this, that, that might not have been addressed already in the EAF?
Just to clarify again--
Yeah.
--there's no option of a--
I understand that, yeah.
--that meet that threshold.
I understand that.
So it is an unlisted action.
Right.
Whether the board chooses to do a positive declaration, which I think you're referring to--
Right, right.
--that's a choice the board has--
Yeah.
--and will make based on--
I'm just, I'm just looking at runoff during rainstorms and things of that nature. And judging by all of the rain that we have had recently, and I think one of my other concerns is traffic, simply because we don't know what's going to happen with the King Cullen, that they're officially putting on County Road 39, which will probably increase traffic for all the streets. So I, I would just like to see different, different issues just kind of try to be answered so everyone has an idea of what we might be facing in the future, okay? I have no problem with the entrances or anything, or with the size of the development. I just would like to see everything as thoroughly looked at, so we don't find a situation later that's, never even, hasn't even been thought of. That's my whole concern. Oh, and, and I know that you have the fee for park space, and you can, you, the board, can make the decision on that. I think that's in the code, so.
Chairman, might I just say something maybe to address this lady's comments about drainage? It's common for a--
Could you come up to the microphone, Gil? Thank you.
It's common when you review and approve a subdivision of this type that a drainage plan has to be submitted and approved by the village engineer, so that would certainly cover those issues. And it's also not uncommon that a condition of subdivision approval would be that all construction be designed so as to retain all runoff on the site. So that's something that we can clearly and easily address, and I think that you should be aware of that. As far as the concern about traffic is concerned, especially as it relates to a possible development of the King Cullen site, first of all, that, that hasn't happened. Second of all, there is proposed traffic control in connection with this development. As you, as you can see, there are four-way stops proposed where Beach Plum Road comes into Moses Lane, so I think that would help to alleviate that issue. But since the King Cullen may or may not happen, or it may or may not happen in a given form, I don't know that it would be appropriate to delay or deny this project because of something that may or may not ever happen. That's, that's really all I, and I think Mr. Schneider had a comment about that as it relates to traffic.
I want to comment that if there's another development coming, that development has to take into account other developments that are on books, so to speak, meaning at, at the village. So if I was doing the King Cullen study, and I know that this was coming, or approved, or, you know, the application was in, I would normally, as a traffic engineer, include that in my study. So whatever does come in the future has to be included, has to include everything that they expect to see based on applications that are already in. If somebody's going to think about a possible project, well, it's, it's not in formally yet. Once it's formally in, then you add it to the traffic study. Of course, you don't have to include it, but they will have to look at that down the road when the time does come.
So does your traffic study calculate--
Can you go up?
Hi, Paul Bolo, 95 Fox Hollow Lane. So does your traffic study include the potential of the application that was already put in for the King Cullen within the town of Southampton?
No, it doesn't include anything, because nothing has gone far enough to include it.
Did it include Bishop Pond?
As I said, nothing was included at all. And realize that the level of service here is A. You can't get better than that. The people who will be sending in applications and going through the whole process will have a traffic study, which I, I don't know if they've had it yet. My guess is they have not yet. Will have a, have a traffic study that will include, for example, our project if this gets, if it does get approved first. Whatever has to be, whatever's approved first will be in the next traffic study done by the next developer.
All right, my question for the board to take into consideration, is there anything within the code and the village right now that allows for a sewage treatment plan in a residential district as opposed to a commercial district alone? We don't have a, we don't have a sewage treatment plan in the village right now, which, which poses a great disservice to the downtown business district, Windmill Lane, which is closest to the water table of Lake Agawam. So, and I, I think the important thing to do is look across the tracks to the north at the last subdivision that was done within the town, which is Southampton Meadows, and the overall yield as far as what that subdivision was able to accomplish, as far as the number of lots, half-acre lots. They were able, they, they were required by the town, since it's outside of the village jurisdiction, to preserve a significant amount of property on the southern or contiguous part to the Long Island Railroad. They preserved a significant amount of property in order to have the subdivision. They also had a playground installed, they had walking paths from some of the adjacent lots, so, you know, that's--
That's a different type of subdivision.
That's a different type of subdivision--
And they have a sewage treatment plant.
And they have a sewage treatment plant, but, you know, there's a significant amount, maybe one-third or 33% or--
Because it's a different type of subdivision.
Right. All right, so I, I would hope the, I would hope that the board would take that into account.
Bishop's Pond is being built with a sewage treatment plant as well.
Right, I know Bishop Pond was built with a sewage treatment plant, but I wasn't familiar with Southampton Meadows having a sewage treatment plant. They do have a big pasture to the south of that subdivision.
I thought they did.
I wasn't--
But Bishop Pond has one, Bishop, right?
Yeah. But there was a significant amount of, either way, there was a significant amount of open space that was taken into consideration when that larger subdivision was done, which I think is a benefit to the community. And I'm noticing that the lot sizes for this subdivision are all roughly 20,000 square feet, so I guess that's calculated off of R20 or 20,000 square feet, when in fact, an acre is 43,560. So, you know, this is the maxed out at 20,000 square feet, the number of lots that you could put in, and I don't really think it takes into account what Mr. Weinstein said before, which is the traffic flow and the impact to, to Moses Lane alone. I'm not sure why West Prospect isn't looked at as a potential entrance and exit to the subdivision. So I would hope that you take that into consideration when making your decision. Thank you very much.
Roger Blau, 80 Post Crossing. It's nice to see how this is getting started, people sharing their concerns, and I have one for you, which seemed to jump out at me. Unless I'm mistaken, the traffic expert said that he did not consider Bishop's Pond into the traffic calculations. Is that, was that the answer that you gave?
I considered no other site.
Well, Bishop Pond is now fully built out. It's not proposed, but it's very nearly fully built out and very nearly fully sold. And with the number of units there, not even having been occupied, but only a scant few, I can tell you any recent car counts are, will not reflect the amount of traffic that is anticipated to flow to and from Bishop's Pond, which is enormous. How many units are there there?
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven, and growing to, by another 20, at least, or 22 units. So we have roughly approaching 100 units, for which no accounting has been made by the traffic expert's admission in his calculations of future possible traffic, and certainly not by the road strips, which they put down to calculate the traffic over the past summer. Those closings have just now started to occur, and I would tell you that maybe a dozen have closed. And I don't even know how many people have moved in. So that's a very big impact on, on the traffic count, and you know Moses Lane is going to be a, a road to and from that, from that site. My second point is on the, is on the subject of green space. We pay an enormous toll out on the east end in the 2% fee. And we have to beg, borrow, and do everything we can manipulate the owner of a piece of property to sell it to give us open spaces. Here, we have an opportunity to create an open space from the start, and I think it's an essential point in any development that's being considered in our village. We have, we complain that we have the least, that we pay the most in the 2% tax and get the least of it. If this board cannot create green space within every development that comes before it, then we have failed twice. And that's something I want you to consider very seriously. You're not getting another two bites out of the apple. This is the only one that you get. And if that means 16 spaces, it means 16, you know, lots, it means 16 lots. Or if it means slightly smaller lots, well, then that's what it means. But we have to live with our neighbors, and it's getting more and more difficult. The amount of developments that are planned on, you know, within a, a stone's throw of our village, in Watermill, Bridge Hampton, and nearby, is astronomical. And I would hope that those planning boards would consider, as I'm asking you to, the necessity of green spaces in our village. Thank you.
I'd like to address just the traffic stuff. I can't do the others.
Come right up here, then.
Couple things. He's mentioning another development that's already started, and there are some cars that are there. Obviously, the cars that are already being generated by that site is obviously included in our August counts. Secondly, most, my understanding is, most of the traffic would not be going up Moses. This is what, this is what I understand, okay? But it doesn't, it's really so insignificant. We have three or four cars an hour. Every three minutes, there's a car coming out of that site using one driveway that will have absolute, I could tell you right now, I've done this for 44 years, there's no way that three cars and one car every three minutes even coming, making a left turn out will be affected by almost anything you have there. And whatever will be there in the future will be addressed. And believe me, the 18 houses will not affect anybody's traffic study. I could tell you that for a fact. Thank you.
I'd like to ask the traffic engineer one question. How can you say, if you didn't, how, what, what data do you have that, that verifies your statement that the Bishop's Pond subdivision is not going to have any effect on Moses Lane?
Because we're only talking, again, we're talking about three or, every minute, every three minutes, there's one car coming out, okay? If, if this other development was right next door to us, it would still have no effect, absolutely none. Because if they have about 100 or so units, I don't know the exact number, but it's some number like that, they're the ones who would have a problem. We would not. We would have, literally, every three, four minutes is a car. And that's all that one driveway where, if you split it in half for any reason, you're talking about one every six, seven minutes. There's no way that will have any impact whatsoever for, by any other development, period.
If I may, it's just hard for me to believe that, that an 80, an 80-unit subdivision is not going to have any effect on Moses Lane.
I think what he, I think what he's saying is that they're going by the traffic being generated from his development, this proposed development. The, the, the traffic study for the other development was heard by the town board. They can only say, this is what we're going to generate.
Oh, I agree with that.
Yeah, everybody's--
I agree with that.
Everybody else is throwing more cars onto the street, for sure.
Oh, no, I agree with that.
But I mean, we're here to look at this subdivision, the impact that this subdivision's going to have on traffic, and he's saying that if they generate, you know, one car every three minutes, it's, it's not going to really be, this is going to be the culprit that's going to be packing the roads. You do have to look at the King Cullens, and you do have to look at, at 100 unit subdivisions. But they're speaking from theirs.
The Southampton Meadows subdivision isn't completely built out either.
Paul, you've got to come up and to the mic.
The Southampton Meadows development, which we were just discussing, to the north, that isn't completely built out. I mean, that's been in construction for over, what, eight years? Seven years? So I think another big question is, for whatever the yield is of total lots that might be approved, is how long is construction going to be occurring on, on the site over time? Are we looking at six years of ongoing construction for the immediate neighbors? You know, that, those are the, those are the least, least important issues, but major, major quality of life issues for the immediate neighbors that are in this room. I think more importantly, when you start talking about the green space, and you start talking about future generations that reside within Southampton Village, you know, what are they going to benefit from this, granting this application for a major subdivision? You know, how are we going to shape, or how is this board going to shape the future of Southampton Village in order to maintain and control the character and keeping of this neighborhood, which used to have significantly less traffic? I mean, if you look at the traffic study, logic would say the affordable, the affordable housing, the application put in on Sandy Hollow Road, which is all the way on the other side of County Road 39A, right? Now, coming south off of Sandy Hollow Road, you can't make a left on County Road 39. You can only make a right, right? Everyone's aware of this? So when they leave that affordable housing complex, provided that's approved, they can only make a right out of that, out of that western side of Sandy Hollow Road, and then they can only make another right. And the next available right that they can make, being that they can't make a left into Southampton Meadows, is Moses Lane. So these are all little elements, the ongoing applications for whether it be affordable housing, Southampton Meadows, how many lots are built out in Southampton Meadows, how many people are actually occupying Bishop's Pond and what's been developed there, which is high density. That's why there's a sewage treatment plant. How much is that going to impact our lives and, you know, the, the residents of, of Corgan Street, of Moses Lane, of Fox Hollow, and all the neighboring areas? I think, you know, another important thing to look at is outside of this zoning district, which is R20, which is half-acre zoning. If you go a little bit to the east, that's R7.5. So if you really want to look at as a whole how the village is broken out into different categories of subdivisions and sizes over time, R7.5 is the smallest possible lot size, 7,500 square feet. It's the smallest zoned area within Southampton Village, and this is what it's abutting. So we already have high density over there as far as septic and, and houses, and it's already been accounted for way back in the day when, I believe that's, I forget the name of the subdivision right over there, that's R7.5. But, you know, that's high density. That's as high a density as you can get for residential housing in Southampton Village. So I think the idea of having substantially less impact as far as drainage, whether it be through the use of less units or less lots, or a sewage treatment plan, is something that really should be taken into consideration. We have R7.5 right there. We have everything south of Hill Street. We have, we have zoning for two to five acres. You know, nothing in the code states that you can break up a five-acre parcel and, and make, you know, multiple residences. If we had a loose enough zoning laws within the estate section that would afford someone to do a 17-lot subdivision, you'd have, you know, you'd have the top five largest law firms right here, right now, making their appeal for this subdivision and to really, really carefully think about it. And that's what I think everyone in this room is asking, is, is, is look at the impact over the long term of what this is going to do. When Broad Hollow was done across the street, there was one, only one entrance and one access proposed. There was only one entrance and access proposed off of Moses Lane, which is where the first house that my father bought in Southampton Village was. He proposed a, a second entrance onto Moses Lane that was adopted from, from a meeting just like this, but in the dead of winter. like this, but in the dead of winter. So, you know, but careful consideration was put into place for that subdivision, and I think it turned out to be a success over time. We're just asking that you do the same thing for this. So thank you very much again.
I have a question for Ken Weinstein again. Does the proposed coverage determine what the coverage will be? They're proposing 3,200 square foot coverage when their allowable is 4,300? No, they're saying in here they're going to only cover 3,200 square feet with house and outbuildings, et cetera?
My office put together that plan. The purpose of that was just to demonstrate that with reasonable-sized houses, reasonable-sized patios, we will conform to zoning.
So it's meaningless. So basically, they can go to 4,300 square feet?
Well, that's what's allowed by code. That's what's allowed by code.
Okay. So this is a false representation of what's going to be built?
No, we were just trying to demonstrate using realistic house footprints that it will conform per zoning.
This is not the site plan of each lot.
Is that under your purview, or?
That's not what's being discussed here.
And it's not under our?
And is the drainage and all that built on the 3,200 or the 4,300?
It's built on the whole size of the lot.
The lot, not the coverage?
Right. Whether it's grass or house, or it has to be kept either on-site. All the runoff on the site has to be kept on-site, and all the runoff on the streets have to be kept on the streets. So nothing will come out onto Moses.
Okay.
From either the houses or the streets.
Thank you.
I just, I just.
One more comment I'd like to.
Taking into consideration that people do rent their houses here. You have to assume that it's possible that some of these houses would be rented, which would bring up the amount of cars into and out of this development. That's all I wanted to say. And I really think it should be looked at very fairly.
I really want to thank everybody for coming and expressing their opinions. Clearly, an issue that has a lot of concern and many questions. I just want to say that this board is not the pro-development board or the keep-it-the-way-it's-always-been board. It's the planning board, and we are appointed by the mayor of the village to enforce the laws and the code of the village. We live in the village just like everybody here. We want it to be the best place. But the applicant, the person who owns this property, has certain rights under the laws, just as you, as neighbors in the community, have rights under the laws. And it's our lucky task up here to try and sort out the data that is being presented to us, and that is where we have some degree of discretion in terms of interpreting the data. But it's not a whole lot of discretion. It's like, here's the evidence, let's figure out what it means. But basically, we're trying to enforce the laws and the code. So it's not up to us to decide that we're going to limit development in Southampton or allow it to go on. Those are the laws of the village, and if you want to change it, you've got to change the laws. And that's really all that we can do here. But there's a lot of evidence. I'm sure these meetings will go on, and further evidence will be presented to the board. We will consider them. There's several letters here that have been entered into the file, which you can see in the file at the building department as well. For now, I think Patrick will allow you to review what's been submitted, so you can come back with your questions and any other points that we may have about this application.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Hi, Chair Rosenbaum.
If you could come up to the microphone, please.
I walked in a little late. I don't know if this has been addressed regarding the Board of Health and the approval of this waste system.
What about the Board of Health?
Based upon quarter acre, they need another method by which to, or approval from the Board of Health.
They have two ways of dealing with the problem. They can either develop a sewage treatment plant, or they get, Patrick, the development rights you were talking about.
And the sewage treatment plant has been approved by the Board of Health?
Nothing has been approved.
Okay. That was a question.
Half-acre. They're half-acre lots. They're half-acre, they're not a quarter of an acre.
Oh, okay.
So, Gil, may I have your permission to adjourn the public hearing, or hold the public hearing open to the next meeting as we continue to evaluate the application?
Yes, you may.
I will make a motion at the request of the applicant to adjourn the meeting for all purposes until, and keep open the public hearing until the next scheduled meeting of public meeting. Sorry, Nat.
That's okay. Turn me on. October 6th.
October 6th.
The second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I've got to bring, I have one of those buttons. One of those, that's easy buttons.
So, really, really. I think you did a great job. Excellent job.
Moving on, we will now open the tennis court section of the planning board public meeting. The first application is Chris Casciato, 177 Captain's Neck Lane, and I believe we're doing a vote on this.
We have a decision in the file approving the application as amended, and therefore an affirmative vote on a motion would be to approve the application.
That's what, 2071?
That's 2071.
2071.
I've got a cowl this one, but that's not it.
No, no, that's 2061. You have 2071?
Yeah, they didn't pass it out.
Oh, okay.
It's been passed now.
They didn't put them in our package.
Yeah, we didn't go.
Two.
So, Mr. Robinson, the decision is that the plan?
As modified.
As modified, meets the concerns of the consultant and the village engineer and should be approved.
Yes, and also counsel.
I have a motion to vote on the plan.
I will make a motion to.
Approve the written decision.
Approve the written decision by counsel.
All in favor of the?
Aye.
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 The application is approved. The next item is Dipeng Zhu, 32 Pheasant Lane. Have you received the additional information, Kathy?
Yes, I have. We have a radius map picture of the surrounding properties and structures, and that was prepared by Squires Holden, and that is the surveyor as well. So they included the lot coverage on that map, which I think is probably new to the town to vote on a survey. It is, the survey was on the, so. And it is stamped and signed by, I don't know what it's meant, but. The landscaping looks fine, and Alba was reviewing the drainage, and it also looks fine. So it's just one, it's very good.
So Kathy, be your recommendation that the decision be to approve this application?
Yes.
So we would adjourn this for decision?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the 32 Pheasant Lane application for decision.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Old Town SH Associates LLC, 6 Old Town Lane. A survey also to be submitted.
The survey was submitted, but this does not show the coverage on it, and that's the idea behind the survey. The coverage, however, is shown on the plan that stands concealed by the Land Management Act. So we did review the landscaping and the drainage, and everything else is fine, it's just that the coverage needs to be shown in the survey. That was the outstanding item.
Is the applicant here?
Yes, I just submitted what was required, a brief piece of information.
Was there a survey that shows the coverage on it?
Yes.
The actual property line survey?
Yes. We added that to the table.
It's on the survey, though.
It was on the survey.
And this is what was in my packet, which is a survey of the property and.
Kevin Murphy, Byrd Road Street, Colespringe Harbor. Did he give you what you want?
This is a copy of what I had.
I know we added the documentation to the site plan.
Yes.
So there should be a table on the site plan.
That's the requirement, right? Yeah. It needs to be on the survey.
Needs to be on the survey.
The actual proposed coverage.
Okay. We have to go to another hearing? It needs to be submitted.
Submit it. Otherwise, it's set to go.
Okay. Okay, on the survey.
Yes.
Make a motion at the request of the applicant to adjourn for all purposes the 6 Old Town Lane application.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, having done the tennis courts, we're back into the public hearing session. First on the agenda, Pep Two Holdings. Public hearing's been held open since the previous meeting. Do we need a motion to open it again? Vote, is it?
No, don't need it. Can we open it? Hold on.
Since the time, David Gilmar and Farrell Fritz for the applicant. Since the last public hearing, Nelson Pope and Voorhees has provided a memo of changes they wanted to vote, the site plan and the landscape plan. We're in the process of doing that, so we'd ask for an adjournment until your next meeting, and hopefully we'll be able to get those revisions done in time for your work session.
Thank you.
Make a motion at the request of the applicant to adjourn for all purposes the Pep Two Holdings LLC subdivision and.
I am Fred Dodd, 23 Metalgrass. I'm a neighbor. I was at the last meeting, and I met with counsel for the applicant a couple weeks ago. I don't have any problem with the development. I just want to emphasize that my interest is to have mature growth between this development and my residential property, which is right behind us. If the gentleman was saying that they're going to revise the landscape part of it, I'd be amenable to that if it's mature growth.
Any further comment regarding this application? Then we will.
Make a motion to adjourn the Pep Two Holdings subdivision and site plan application for all purposes to the next public meeting of October 6, 2014.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. South Lane Properties, 104 Gin Lane.
That's been adjourned. To the October meeting. Oh, actually, no, there was a request for an adjournment to the October meeting.
Make a motion at the request of the applicant to adjourn for all purposes the 104 Gin Lane application to the October meeting.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think that's October 6, isn't it?
October 6.
Subdivision review section. Item one, Mitchell Family Real Estate Limited Partnership, 180 Great Plains Road.
In the file is a decision pursuant to the recommendation of staff approving the application as amended, an affirmative vote on the motion would be to approve the application.
I will make a motion to approve the conditional resolution of minor subdivision approval in the matter of the Mitchell family.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This conditional resolution is approved by the board. Paul Robinson, 105 Little Plains Road.
For the applicant, Gilbert G. Flanagan, 21 South Main Street, Southampton. This is a subdivision application that you may recall from a number of years ago. You may recall that you granted sketch plan approval for it. It's a two-lot subdivision on the corner of Little Plains Road and Meeting House Lane. The Board of Appeals also granted certain variances, I think mainly having to do with lot width, to permit a more regular configuration of the two lots. And as you may recall, the applicant went to the Suffolk County Department of Health Services. At that point, we had requested a waiver of variance from the Board of Review to satisfy the sanitary flow requirement by the purchase of Pine Barrens credits, and the Board of Review said that they would not approve that, but they would approve a division if we were able to acquire and sterilize another piece of property within what they call the groundwater contributing area to this site. Well, after many months of looking, my clients have in fact acquired such a piece of property and have presented it to the Health Department, and the Health Department Board of Review has approved that transfer. So now, effectively, the Health Department approval has been given. So we're now in the position of reactivating the final approval application, which we filed many months ago. So that's really what I'm here for, the main purpose. The only thing I think you could possibly do this evening is to schedule the matter for a public hearing. That's really what I'm asking you to do, to schedule a public hearing on final approval. It's the same plan that you approved as a sketch plan. It's the same plan that the Board of Appeals approved, so we would ask you to schedule a public hearing.
Mr. Flanagan, just, if you could just clarify for me, the requirement was not that the property that to be sterilized would be in the village of Southampton, in the watershed area, correct?
Yes, what they call a groundwater contributing area. It turns out that the property that we acquired is in the village. So we satisfied that desire, and we also satisfied the Health Department's requirement that it be within the contributing area. And I believe I submitted a copy of the Board of Review decision that.
Where is the property?
It's in the Hillcrest area. And we see where the direction of groundwater flow is. The Health Department does have maps, and it is within the same area as the subject
And you got a copy of the Board of Health approval?
It's right here.
Okay. Let me see that.
Is it in the trophy in our space? It's, that's our only one there.
Okay. So, I'll make a motion to adjourn this for a public hearing at the next, at the request of the applicant, to the October 6.
I guess the request was to schedule a public hearing, is that, and if you're going to schedule a public hearings, that would be fine.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
O.I.A. Associates, 212 Windmill Lane. We've adjourned that?
It's adjourned to October.
Sorry. 550 and 554 Hill Street, request for adjournment, have we... We haven't approved that, right Gil, you requested us to adjourn this to October?
Yes, we did, yeah, we submitted a letter.
Okay, make a motion at the request of the applicant to adjourn the 550, 554 Hill Street to the October 6 session.
I'll second it.
I'm sorry, to the, to the...
It would be the work session.
What's the work session?
For October or for September?
Yeah.
September's work session is the 29th.
To the September 29th work session.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Did we get a, did you schedule the public hearing then for October on...
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Harkonnen LLC and Atreides LLC, 48 First Neck Lane, is there a decision on this?
Decision in the file approving the application as amended, and affirmative vote on the motion would be to approve the subdivision.
Yeah, that one's handed out. A sketch plan.
Here, I got it.
Mm-hmm. No, it's number five. I will make a motion to approve the resolution of sketch plan approval on Harkonnen and Atreides.
I'll second it.
All in favor of the application?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
The application of R. John Punnett, 220 Hampton Road, has been adjourned to November. Excited him on the agenda, Moses Bishop LLC, 132 McGee Street.
We have a conditional approval for the application for consideration of the board, approved by consultant and counsel, and therefore an affirmative vote on the motion would be to approve the application as amended.
And we'll get with all this, right?
Yes.
Tell me again what this means, what's a draft decision, Bo? When it says it's considering a draft decision?
On the application, on the agenda, that was just the choice of words that the building department used to do it, it should have been considered the...
Final, it's final site plan approval.
So, draft doesn't have the implication that it's like a rough draft, waiting to be...
This is, this is well thought out, well, very detailed after the decision.
Thank you for clarifying that.
I will make a motion to approve the written resolution for conditional final site plan approval of the Moses Bishop LLC.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Cowell's Associates, 477 Little Plains Road. Decision in the file.
Decision in the file, this, you may remember, is a two lot minor subdivision with two parcels that were merged and have been requested to be divided into the two parcels. Applicant had obtained permission from, or necessary variances from the Board of Appeals, and the application has now been reviewed by the village engineer, consultant, and all of us approve it. So, therefore, an affirmative vote on the motion would be to approve the application to re-subdivide.
And this is right to final, right, because there's no Health Department?
This is the final.
Okay, great, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the conditional resolution approving the minor subdivision of Cowell's Associates LLC.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Ken.
Real Estate Organization Belgium LLC, 477 First Neck Lane.
A decision is in the file approving the re-subdivision, or what's referred to as a lot line modification. Still pending is the determination for approval under the flag lot provision of the code, but this approves the lot line modification as submitted, and therefore a affirmative vote on the motion would be to approve the re-subdivision.
I'll make a motion to approve the written resolution approving the lot line modification of Real Estate Organization of Belgium.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
And thank you.
Southampton Real Estate Partners LLC, 85 and 95 Down East Lane.
Good evening, this is an application in the first instance for sketch plan review for a two lot subdivision at the end of Down East Lane. We discussed that at the work session, and I can give you a little history of it if you like, or not, as the case may be. If you look at the tax map, you'll note that this property does show as two lots on the Suffolk County tax map, although through someone other than myself, the two lots apparently a few years ago merged in title, and the way they were divided before, they were not equal in area, so one of them was a non-conforming lot. So, as a result, we have filed an application which would now create two conforming lots under the R-120 zoning, with the notation that the existing improvements were to be removed. Again, this is an as-of-right subdivision, meeting all the zoning requirements, and because the property does show as two lots on the tax map, I think the Health Department's review will be somewhat more simple, because they do recognize two separate lots on the tax map, although we will have to go before them. But that's essentially it, I guess the next step procedurally would be if you agree to schedule a public hearing on the sketch plan.
We haven't, we haven't put together a memo on this, we've done a preliminary review, it is, as Mr. Flanagan says, it meets the aerial requirements for a, the subdivision. I haven't checked the setback requirements, going ahead with it, so, but I... I don't know if it makes sense to go for a public hearing at this time. I can't expect to get the input from the neighbors, but I would prefer to wait just a month.
Was this, this has, had been previously subdivided and then was joined?
No, it was two, it was two separate lots, but when there was an acquisition, I guess someone from the city didn't realize about zoning and took title of both lots in the same name, and they merged.
Is it being re-subdivided on the same line?
No, it isn't, in fact, that's the whole point of it, is if it had, if it were the same as original, I wouldn't need to be here, because they would be two conforming lots. The problem was, one lot was bigger and one lot was smaller, it was created under the old R-80 zoning, and now it's R-120. So, when we reconfigured it, it's now two 120,000 square foot lots, so we don't need any variances. I would love dearly if we could possibly schedule it for a public hearing, I know my clients would, too.
It's two, one lot's 120,000, one's 207,000.
Right, yeah, so that's, yes, so they...
So, it's not 220, it's one's...
No, one is oversized and the other one is conforming.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's all the way down at the end.
Unbelievable. Put both of them together.
More information before a public hearing is scheduled, I don't have an objection specifically. I mean, you can always get the comments from the public, and I can provide my comments at the same hearing, so that's fine.
That would be extremely helpful if you could, obviously, it's only a sketch plan, so...
Right.
You didn't anticipate any of your comments would result in the need to change the plan?
Oh, no.
Okay. Well, I have no problem then with scheduling a public hearing, if, Ms. Lemansky, if you want to make that...
I'll make a motion at the request of the applicant to schedule a public hearing for the Southampton RE Partners, 85 and 95 Down East Lane, for the October 6 meeting.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Thank you very much.
Site plan review, LMR Associates, 89 Hampton Road.
Good evening, board members, Kevin McGowan of Essex Hefter &amp; Angel for the applicant, standing in for Ted Sklar this evening. We received a letter just this afternoon raising a couple of issues regarding the lighting plan. I believe all the additional comments raised in an August 6 letter have been addressed, and Tim Rumpf, the landscape architect, is here to speak to the lighting plan if need be. Otherwise, if you have any other questions for me, I'll do my best to answer them.
Yeah, the leather Cathy.
We've put together a recommendation for the, for the, for the work session.
Great.
Now, your analysis, when I read it, showed that some of the lighting levels at the exterior limits of the property were elevated, and you were requesting some additional landscaping or shielding of the light?
The way the photometric plan was done did not account for this shielding, I'm not sure that they have the technology actually to account for that in a photometric plan, and, I mean, if they could, that would be ideal, otherwise, they might consider other fixtures, maybe putting three lower fixtures instead of the two higher fixtures, especially on the northern property line. The western property line adjoins another commercial use, and that's where the ATMs are, and that's very tough, you have to have a certain level of lighting for security. So, that's a really tough thing to meet in that place, but...
Did I note that in one place, there wasn't quite enough light, you felt the light level should be increased in one area?
Yeah, there's a tenth of a foot candle in the area of the parking lot closest to the entrance, and I thought that was a little bit low, so they might want to reevaluate that as well.
Do you have a chance to review the report?
Mr. Chairman, Tim Rumpf, Maris Design for the applicant, yes, we have, and we've already started to analyze some of the items that Ms. Eisman had stated in her memo, and we'll be redesigning that lighting plan to do the best we can. Thank you.
Do we need anything else?
We'll, we'll look at the bond requirements together this month, and talk about it at the work session.
Okay.
And the landscaping, you're okay with the landscaping?
The landscaping is fine, yeah.
I'll make a motion to adjourn for all purposes the LMR Associates, 89 Hampton Road, to the October 6 meeting for the September work session.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anything new to discuss on the hubbard of Southampton's bond issues?
Nothing new on that yet.
No?
No.
Pelosi Ioto and Roller, 50 County Road 39. Have we heard from John Park, John Foster?
I did speak with John Foster before the work session last week, and he hasn't been able to get to a written, he hasn't... And I don't know if there's anything available today, but...
I checked this afternoon, nothing had been done on that issue yet. We're working on the Nelson Pope revisions that they requested, but any of the changes would hinge on what John's interpretation is, I think we're fairly certain it's going to come back and confirm the ZBA decision of how many spaces, but until we get that, we're sort of hamstrung. So, I guess I'm requesting an adjournment.
I'll make a motion at the request of the applicant to adjourn the Pelosi Ioto and Roller until the September work session, October 6.
No.
September 29th work session.
Do I have a second?
No, I'm sorry, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Crease Properties, 16 Windmill Lane.
For the applicant, David Gilmar and Farrell Fritz, we received a memorandum from Nelson Pope on the A.F., we submitted comments to that, and we updated the A.F., I believe it was acceptable to Cathy, and we request a public hearing be scheduled for this application.
The plans for what is being proposed are in order, however, there are some outstanding issues, as everyone has heard, with the being able to accommodate the sanitary waste on the property and drainage, so I don't see any reason why we shouldn't have a public hearing at this point, but we would encourage the applicant to speak to those issues, as if there's any solutions, and how you're going to report with those, dealing with those issues.
I'd just most respectfully say that the Health Department is in charge of the septic, so we'll satisfy the Health Department and do our best to let the board know, but our discussions with the Health Department have been, they're, they're happy that we are using the uses that are within the CO, and we're actually going to a dry use where there was a wet use. So, they say, you know, there's nothing you can really do there, and we're happy with that change, so don't worry about it, basically.
Are you thinking about using the existing system?
Yes. Or, I mean, we try to do any updates we could to it, but, you know, we're very constricted on that lot, and, you know, kind of behind, between a rock and a hard place in being able to deal with it, but...
Just clarified that for this, for me, I'll, so there's a building there that's been in use legally, if they were to continue without making any changes, they could continue to be in use, using exactly what they've got already. They're going to actually reduce the amount of...
Flow.
Flow. And there's not really any feasible way to make it a lot better, or are there feasible ways to make it better?
I don't think all the, all of the possibilities have been explored, I think there are possible alternatives. You have a situation here where most of the lot is occupied by a building, they have, it's an old building, they're proposing two commercial stores with two apartments above it, one having three bedrooms, the second one having two bedrooms. And they're putting in a proposed sanitary system which falls short of the current requirements, because they have a major problem with high groundwater. The groundwater is at four and a half feet, and by the time you get that line out there, it would be surprising if you get more than a foot effective depth in any one of the four pools that they're proposing. So, they fall far short of the sanitary requirements, but again, that would be a Health Department issue presumably to address. We're talking about, we reduced the flow, I think originally the building permit indicated a wet store, which meant that theoretically we could have a food handling establishment, but the terms of the sanitary flow would be the same. So, the sanitary flow is the same, if you could change it to a commercial without a wet store, as opposed, because they're dealing with just so many square feet. But they have to rearrange these facilities within the building, I think the occupancy in the past was the first floor had the apartment, now they're going to change that to two commercials with the apartments on the second floor. And from our perspective, there's still the issue of not only the sanitary system, but the stormwater, there is absolutely no place to put the stormwater, and where you're putting the sanitary system, it basically falls short of a number of different requirements that I believe the Health Department... And where you're putting the sanitary system, it basically falls short of a number of different requirements that I believe the Health Department will insist on. And then there's the other question about parking. So we have those three-legged stool that has to be arranged. And I'm anxious to see what the applicant can do.
Okay. But you've also got this building that's a wreck sitting there. If they don't do anything, they could keep using it the way it is.
Well, right now it's unoccupied and.
It was formerly a restaurant, time and again, if you remember. And it's not going to be a restaurant use, it'll be a dry use. But I think we're a little far afield. We'll deal with what we can and what we can get from the Health Department and come back to you. If we could just move forward. You know, under the scenario that's been raised tonight, that building will just remain as is for however long, until, I don't know, maybe the village buys something and we can gain access to some sewage treatment. But that can't be the result of, that can't be the outcome of this public hearing, is that we can improve, obviously, derelict property in replacing a wet use for the dry use. But, you know, we'll do our best to work through that system with the Health Department, which again is their jurisdiction. So we'll do our best there.
And Cathy, you're okay with going to public hearing?
A public hearing, yes.
Make a motion at the request of the applicant to schedule a public hearing on Crease Properties for the October sixth meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
The applicant for Nine Main Street has requested an adjournment to October's work session. If we could have a motion to.
Motion at the request of the applicant to adjourn the Nine Main Street LLC to October's work session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Morley Agency thirty-two Hampton Road.
At the last meeting, we had distributed a memo about, kind of a biggest concern had to do with the southernmost parking space on the Morley Agency property. And so we met with them this afternoon, and they told them they didn't have to come. Here's, actually, there's one for, there's a bunch of them there. What they did is, a very good solution to that problem is they actually switched the parking. The parking would be on the west side, and then the aisle would be on the east side. So they are going to spend some money designing that and making sure that that works. But it seems like a really good solution to that problem. And the other thing he did hand out was a copy of the generator standard, so I could put that in file as well. But this also does have a testing phase. And they do recommend that they have the testing phase. It's like once we're in for something during the middle of the day, so that way it's not going to wake up any neighbors or, and also so that way you get used to hearing it and make sure that it actually does run. So when you need it, it will turn off, so. That was it, right? Oh, and then one other thing that I would be satisfied if the engineer certifies that the, that the pools are cleaned and upgraded and so forth. So it doesn't necessarily have to be there, but.
Yeah, there's, there's three leaching pools that handle the stormwater. But they've been there for a while, and there's some question of their efficiency. So, and so they're going to clean them out, and it may be, and they may have to put on traffic bearing covers because they have to move on right now. And that's the area that they're proposing to park.
Okay.
So that has to be looked at.
Okay, so we're going to wait for more info?
Yeah, so they'll, hopefully we'll get something before the next work session, so we can talk about it then.
Okay. Make a motion at the request of the applicant to adjourn the Morley Agency thirty-two Hampton Road to the October work session of September twenty-ninth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Starbucks Coffee Company twenty-nine Hampton Road.
I have three few swings off.
This is a issue here.
So this is another one, I didn't get through the whole thing. But it does make sense to have a public hearing for this one as well. The, you know, it's a very extensive site plan application. There's one question that I had for the applicant. Mr. Bennett submitted this last week with a map of the property with the leased parking area. And so I just would like a little bit more information about.
Sure.
Who that serves and the calculations that go with that and so forth. So if you could write something up that comes with the covenant?
Write something up, and also I'll give you the covenant and the, and the planning board approval for it. That's why, because that's why we only have to provide sixty percent of the parking. Right, if we can look at the covenant, I think Mr., the owner, is that him, Sir Tillman? Sir Tillman Ballin, Mr. Sir Tillman owns the property. So we'll get, we'll get you all the information, but in the interim, I thought it would be, thank you, I thought it would be a good idea to have a public hearing.
Mr. Bennett, can you just remind me what's the authority that when you have the combined parking lot, it reduces the parking requirement?
Yeah, I put in my letter, let me see if I can find it, I can give you the chapter and verse. It's, I know it starts with the letter K. Hold on a second, I have to find it now. It's in the Village Code. The Village Code says that whenever you have shared parking on a site that's shared with the neighbors, the total requirement for parking is reduced by six, is sixty percent. Somebody, does somebody have a Village Code? I know I had it in my presentation.
But that's, that's assuming that the neighbors all agree that you can park on the property.
It's already, but it's already in place.
It's already in there. There's already covenants that have been agreed to.
There's a covenant that covers the situation. And I handed up, the last time I handed up a, the plan for shared parking that was put in place. And somebody, I know, I know in my presentation, the last time I gave the chapter and verse, if somebody has a Village Code, I could.
It's all right, if, I just couldn't remember from the last meeting.
It's the subsection K of the Village Parking Requirements that states that where you have coordinated parking. And the whole idea is that the trustees pass this law to facilitate and encourage shared parking. I might even be, I might even have, I've had the architect put it on the site now, because I thought it was, oh, here we go. It's section one-one-six. Wow, I'm wearing my magnum, buying glasses, I can't. One-one-six dash fourteen K five. Sixty percent in Village Business Districts where shared parking facilities. And then we did the calculation. Because as you know, when you have a, it's the, I think it's the only exception to the grandfathering rules for parking. Typically, if you have, say, a thousand square foot or ten thousand square foot building, and you have a use there, and say, just say it has no parking whatsoever, because it predated all the parking requirements. If you're not adding one square foot to that use, you know, to the, to the building, you're a grandfather, even if you have absolutely no onsite parking, if it's the same parking calculation. The only exception that I'm aware of is an exception that came about, actually from some litigation that, I had a client that's now in the Beach Bakery. Is it Beach Bakery? No, it's the Blue Duck Bakery. We made an application probably almost twenty years ago, well, about sixteen years ago, for seats. And we had seats that were fine with the Health Department. And the village denied the application because they said that's a new use and you need seating for it. We went to the Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court said that's a customary accessory use, and it's subject to those grandfathering provisions. The village then changed the code that said where you have an accessory on-premise consumption for a retail food store, you have to add one seat per resp, three area, three air, for, it's one seat per area. It's one, it's essentially one, one parking space for three seats. But in this instance, we're able to achieve that because the code requirement for parking is only sixty percent where you have shared parking. So we have more than adequate parking for that additional accessory on-premise food consumption use. I was very, very careful about that, because I knew that would be an issue, so. That's what we did. I'll get, there's, in addition to the, the map showing the shared parking, there's also a covenant. And I'll get, I'll get that for you. I know Mr. Sir Tillman had given me that. I'll get another copy of it and put it in the record, because that's certainly something that you would want as well. Other than that, it's some interior alterations, some minor fenestration changes, and signage. And we've made an application to the ARB for that. So a public hearing would be greatly appreciated.
So is it your wish that we move this to the public hearing?
If you would.
You're okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Public hearing.
So Warren, do you want to make a resolution to, at the request of the applicant, to adjourn this for all purpose for a public hearing?
Well, you want to. Just set, establish the public hearing for October sixth.
Like you said.
Like you said. I have a second.
I'll second, all in favor?
Make a motion?
Was there something I said that offended Mr. Lamansky?
He recused himself.
Has he left the house?
I would, I would never worry about it, frankly. Oh, I'm sorry, Steve.
All right. Moving into the Flagpole Lot Landscaping Plan Review. Elizabeth Jeanke, four-eighty-three Hill Street.
Can we finish with Morley then? I think we're on Starbucks.
No, we passed that.
We took the advice of your.
You would like to address them towards?
Do I go after?
You can go after Mr. Bennett.
This has been on the board's agenda for this landscaping for about nine months now. So as, as everyone knows, the house is under construction. It's probably about eighty percent completed.
Oh.
And so we have been trying to establish for some time the landscaping here. And I quite candidly ask that you approve it tonight. What we've done is very, 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 very accommodative to all, all of the neighbors, we feel. And there were, it sounded to me like the board was ready to approve this last time, but Nelson and Pope wanted to.
There's a lot of extras here.
Wanted to make some planting species changes because of the.
Bill?
Because of the hope that.
Take one.
Barbara, take that. There were certain species that Nelson and Pope wanted substituted. So what we do, did was we, hemlock is now proposed as a screen planting along the majority of the eastern property line, as they are tolerant of the existing black walnut trees. I know from personal experience, black walnut's an interesting tree.
Could you speak to that? I can't hear you, put your back. Thank you.
Sure, I'd be, I'd be happy to.
So what did you say?
Black walnut have this, they drop a toxic substance to prevent growth of other species around them. So what we did is we substituted the hemlocks, which are tolerant of the existing black walnut trees and also more appropriate to the shaded location. And this should take care of the August twenty-ninth, twenty-fourteen memorandum of Laura Urbat from Nelson Pope and Board Heels. I know there's been back and forth about, quite a bit of back and forth. We've tried to take care of all the neighbors. Jane Kratz is here. Yeah, I guess you had some discussions with Mr. Pressman and some other neighbors who are anxious to see this proceed and get the property screened. So I would ask you to, to approve this, this plan. It's been, I don't, I'm not trying to be flippant, but it's really beaten to death. This is some fairly basic screening. We've been extremely accommodative to the neighbors. It has been a moving target. I would, in addition to Mr. Pressman, one of the other neighbors inquired as to when the property was going to be screened because there is ongoing construction. And our pledge to them was to get the thing screened as quickly as possible. So that's what we're trying to do. So this, this is the same site plan that you saw with the exception of the substitution of species, the purpose of which is to respond to the Nelson and Pope memorandum. And we agree that's a more likely species in terms of a survival. I didn't realize that it was the black walnut I would have been able to eat, not that I'm a landscape architect or, but I do know from personal experience that black walnut trees, it's hard to, you have to have a particularly tolerant species to grow in the area of them. They actually drop a toxin, I believe, of some nature. I may, I don't think I'm making this up, I've heard it before, so.
Did your, Barbara, have a chance to review this, Kathy?
Uh, no, I just got this, so I, I mean, she had made a couple of suggestions, you being one of them and the other, but.
It's hemlock.
It's the same, it's the same?
Mm-hmm.
You is hemlock?
No, 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 no. It was hemlock or.
Or you.
You.
In the last proposal.
So this is, this is, this is no change other than to adopt the Nelson Pope recommendations. Again, this is, this is a screening application on a lot, on a flag lot that's been on the calendar for nine months.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
So I would ask you to approve it this evening.
Good evening, Chair and Stevenson Board. Barbara Missett, four-seventy-one Hill Street. And I might add that I'm more anxious than anybody, since I'm in the worst position. As we've discussed at the last meeting, the Building Department issued a permit, not for landscaping, and they were not allowed to per those decision and the law. So apparently, construction has been halted. Sixty percent has been already landscaped with Leyland Cypress. Now, I just want to show you, you know, due to just getting this plan, not tonight's plan, last Monday at the work session, I tried to do as much research as possible, but unfortunately did not get my little booklets back from Federal Express on time until today. So I would like to pass these out and then, can we, can you get that by? Thanks. So I'm going to, in lieu of speaking, because I get so nervous, I'm going to just read a couple of things. Having reviewed the recent August twelfth from last weekend, or last Monday's, landscape plan submitted by Hampton Rustic for the four-eighty-three Hill application, I must object to the board's approval of it for the following reasons. The plan is not signed by a licensed landscape architect, as stipulated in the conditional decision of the Board of Architectural Review and Historic Preservation, written by Albert Robinson on May fourteenth. It reads as follows. The landscape plan, this is what's in the conditional decision. The landscape plan submitted by the applicant last revised February twenty-one, two thousand and fourteen lacks attribution and is not signed by a licensed architect, licensed landscaped architect. This decision is conditioned upon the applicant submitting to the board a landscape design which complies with the board's standards and incorporates applicable provisions contained in the letter of Jane V. Kratz, PC, who is the attorney, in-house attorney, I believe, for Farrell Building, dated January sixth. To the best of my knowledge and belief, Hampton Rustic LLC is not a licensed landscape architect. Therefore, their landscape plan does not meet the requirements in the written ARB conditional decision. That's point one. Here is this LLC Hampton Rustic LLC. There's no attribution, they are definitely not landscape architects. Secondly, they're having, this is the ninth revision to this plan. It is the first one with removing the linden trees. It is the first one with removing the linden trees, these two linden trees. Never before in all eight have these been suggested. In fact, we had many meetings in the ARB, starting in the December 11th, which was the first one of 2013, and in the second one in Jan, January 11th, 2014, where it was agreed that the linden trees would remain. In fact, on this very plan, which says, "The latest Hampton Rustic plan has been amended to remove number one and number two linden trees to accommodate screening, not for any other reason except to accommodate screening." Beautiful, historic, hundred-year-old deciduous trees that are helpful to the environment and every, might, that'll help, I might add. Right on the very same plan, which was submitted last week, it says, this is Jane Kratz's letter notes, the lawyer, "Please, existing trees, my client's plan indicates preserving all existing healthy trees on the east side. Other healthy trees within the site will also be preserved where indicated." Now, I don't know, I don't know how come this, this is certainly a change from any other landscape plan. Secondly, on this, in addition to removing these trees, I just want to show you, this is my pool, this is my backyard. Can you see this? These two trees, which are this and this, these big, they're both double trunk trees, huge double trunk trees. The dimensions listed here are not accurate. They're still not accurate at all, honestly. Are the two major trees that, you know, hide the house. I mean, I know there's going to be planting here, but without the height of these trees and the beautiful leaves, I'm going to really see right in it. Plus, it destroys the whole symmetry of the other existing trees. The other, I might add one thing that is covered in the, what do you call it, the Pope, whatever, report that just came out today. I just got the second. It does say, which I'm stating in here as well, that this particular tree is partially on my property and nobody's allowed to take it down without written, express written permission, legally take it down, neither side, unless they have written permission from the other side. So I don't, I think it'll be a long time of forthcoming from me, that permission. The other thing is, you're stating the same thing I am. I said it, you know, two, in the work session two times ago, that I've talked to certified arborists, I have reports from certified arborists in this, this report I just gave to you. They said, of course, that the cypress, or nothing, can be planted too close to these trees because of the shade and the killing of the roots of the big trees, really, is the major problem. So far, and I proposed a plan at that point, which basically is pretty much this. This is about where my property, you know, the, in fact, maybe this is the line right there. So here's my pool right here and my backyard, my house. They have already planted these, started to stagger those out. Chris Talbot of the building department, Ray Smith of Ray Smith Associates Arborist, and Mr. John Favaro of Built, Farrell Building, and I walked this, I, we all thought that looked terrific. We are all very pleased with them. And they're already there. Why they have to take this down? I have no idea. So I see no reason for this to begin with. And secondly, down here, we decided that, I need this other board right here. Oh, no. You know what? This one. Well, I want to keep this one up because it has a lot of other things on it, unfortunately. Now, another change is, I drew these trees in right here. Do you see these two? What were identified by Hampton Rustic as maple trees on every one of the eight plans. They're, they've been omitted. I drew those in because they're not even on the plan anymore. What happened to them? They're just totally omitted. I have no idea where they went. And this particular tree, right there, is one of those two. We discussed removing those. They're the black walnuts. They're not in great shape. And then we could do these Leyland cypresses right to this double tree here, you know, adjacent. We would remove this one maple on my property, which is quite close. Or maybe we won't even have to. But, I mean, there's a solution to this that is not being considered. All right. They already covered the poisonous substance or the toxins, which is true. Now, I have one other interesting point. This, a further consideration is that since the current plan significantly varies from its previous eight revisions, it may require approval from both the ARB and the planning board. To quote the Chair, Curtis Highsmith, in the ARB meeting of January 8th, 2014, and this is a direct quote from the video, "Just to let you know that any approval we receive or we grant is in consistency with what we receive in terms of testimony, material, landscape plan drawings, or elevation that have been altered. All of that is included in and will be also established in a written decision, so the approval will be what's submitted at that point, which has been submitted, as you know, and that's in your conditional thing. Anything that is not, or anything that is done that is not upon or part of the approval has to come back before this board and be reapplied. An alteration to an existing approved application, and then we have to re-vote on the application. So it is part of the approval overall." Hamho continued in that same meeting. "That's inclusive of the licenses, survey, licensed architects stamping the plans, and so forth, and certification of building inspector prior to allowing them to have an issuance of permit." We all know there was no permit for the eighty percent construction. Or, well, it was, it was granted, but there was no legal reason that it should have been.
Tell it to the judge.
Well, that's, I'm not going to argue. I think Mr. Robinson has already established that. Therefore, I respectfully submit or request that we either have a revised plan that is suitable, or, and certainly adjourn this meeting until you have such a thing, and all these inconsistencies, and perhaps legal issues are resolved. Thank you very much for your kind consideration.
A word about the alleged illegality. One of the neighbors attempted to stop construction and went to the, and went to the Supreme Court, Suffolk County, and had a very extensive set of legal papers. And Judge Gargula refused to enjoin construction. So I think that's sort of the law of the case as it goes to the validity of the building permit. I, I'm literally at my wits' end at trying to satisfy Ms. Missit, who, and satisfy Mr. Pressman at the same time. Ms. Missit, by the way, is in litigation with Mr. Press, with Mr. Pressman about the house that he built on his property and had purchased from Ms. Missit. So I'm trying to satisfy everyone here. If Ms. Missit has a plan that she would prefer to this, I would suggest that she present it so everyone can see visually what she wants us to plant on this property, as opposed to just continually shooting holes in a plan. We try to, I'm going to say, say it straight. We try to appease her concerns and then other concerns arise. For example, some of the trees, she said that she didn't want us taking down. We have a letter signed by her saying that she has no objection to it. Now it seems she has objection to it. So I would ask, so that this project can be completed and it can be screened for all of the neighbors, not just Ms. Missit. Was there another neighbor who was, expressed frustration that the screening hadn't been continued?
Mrs. Johnkey, who's...
Mrs. Johnkey and one other neighbor as well. So it's not just the concerns of Ms. Missit, it's the overall concerns of the neighborhood to try to get this site screened. And if Ms. Missit has an alternate plan that she would like planted out there, we'd like to see it. Not just, I don't like this, I don't like this, I don't like this, oh, you did this, okay, I don't like this now. Because that's what it's become. So again, I would simply ask that if Ms. Missit has an alternate plan that she would find more protective, we try to satisfy her concerns. So I'm sure if the plan is something that is reasonable, we would be more than happy to do it. So I would, I think that makes a lot of sense. So visually, you can see what Ms. Missit wants to see, wants, wants to have there, and then you can decide whether or not, which, which plan makes more sense. We've tried to, Nelson Pope had some concerns with the plant material. I think we've met those. I think that's really all we can do right now.
So is our, is our code mimicking the ARB code? Does it say in our code that this has to be stamped by a licensed landscape architect? Or is that just the ARB code?
It's just the ARB code.
I mean, I'm okay with this. I've heard it all. It, it sounds to me like it's a little, it's, it's neighborly problems. I think this thing's been screened and screened again, and it looks like they brought the Sherwood forest in, so I'm okay with it.
May I, in rebuttal to Mr. Bennett, to begin with, the litigation, he should actually be, have refused himself because he does represent Mr. Pressman in my case against his building uncoherent property. Well, I mean, you can't defend Mr. Pressman and then oppose me and so forth. In the last public planning board meeting, I submitted the plan that I, which is a plan that we agreed upon with Mr., here, this is just literally in last, the public meeting. This is what you saw. They've already built these out. These are the existing trees are still there. They have not been removed. We suggested that this be cut down, these two, this, well, here's, here this tree, which is right at the southern part of the driveway, then you could have straight from the entrance of the flagpole thing, have these Leyland cypresses going along, not interfering with anything, by just cutting down this tree and the other black walnut.
And those two trees are on your property?
They're on Farrell's property. They agreed. I propose this letters of...
Which is the tree that you said is on your property?
This one right here.
Where is it on the plan?
On the plan. It is, it wasn't on today's plan. I had to draw it on. Now here, it's down here somewhere, right here.
So, okay, well...
I already proposed, I've written a letter of permission, having it notarized, which is what Ms. Kratz asked me to do. Am I correct? That's what you asked me, to get, give you written permission, have it notarized and so forth?
Yes, Jane.
So I have done that. I don't want to be told that I'm holding this up. And this has nothing to do with it. The other neighbors have their screening. I don't have screening.
If I may, I'm Jane Kratz. I'm an attorney and I also represent the applicant and landowner. The applicant is happy to preserve the Leylands and cypress and the linden trees that are there. We've been advised that they are not particularly healthy, they're not particularly safe. If Ms. Missit is prepared to assume and affect the liability of our keeping these unstable, unhealthy trees on our property, we will do so. We just wanted to go on record tonight that that is not our preference. We initially did intend to preserve most of the trees on this easterly border. However, the more involved this study became, the more arborists that we discussed the matter with, we became convinced that they should really be eliminated for all of our safety sake. But we will leave them. But we wanted to be on record that that would be something we would not want to do, but we are prepared to do. We are also happy to remove the two black walnuts that Ms. Missit, in her letter to me, consented to. So that would be the only refinements other than introducing the hemlocks, which I assume you don't have any objection to.
I do.
The use of hemlocks as opposed to cypress.
No, I must defer to Leyland cypress.
The Leyland cypress will not survive with the existing conditions.
If the policies are trimmed, they need to be trimmed and cabled. We've been going through this as well.
I believe the village consultant's suggestion that we use hemlocks is in everyone's best interest. It's great screening. Mr. Pressman, the other immediate neighbor, has agreed to that. And that would be what we would propose with those refinements. Thank you.
So these, these linden, you want these linden to remain?
You have, that one has to remain because you don't have the authority to take it down.
Oh, I could take down half of it.
No, you cannot. You have your own report.
Look at the law. Okay. So you want, you want, you want the, I know, I can.
We will leave the lindens.
Move it all the way to my property line.
That's not true.
All right.
It's because of the health of the tree.
Okay. In any event, these, these, this 48-foot linden and this 24-foot linden, you would like those to remain?
They've been in every other...
I just, I just say yes or no.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So do you have any...
We will leave them.
We'll leave them. So we're going to leave the linden trees. Is there, is there anything else that you would like removed or taken away? Let's just do this so we don't have to put everybody through.
I've done it with Jane and I've done it with everybody. I don't know how many other people.
So we're going to, the red, these...
I presented it to the board.
Barbara, just tell me what you want. That's really what I want to hear from you.
I want...
All right.
What?
Excuse me?
That's what it's going with that.
I would, as you had mentioned, cutting down, which, let's look at my plan because it has the trees on it. This tree, the black walnut, this black walnut, which is down here.
Will you indicate on here so there's no mistake? I'll give you a pen.
You don't, they're not drawn on this plan.
Okay, what are you talking about?
I am, these are trees that you draw on your earlier, last week's plan. It's a twin.
Can we get you guys to go in the back, figure it out?
Because I'm trying to do it in front of the board so that there's no mistake about this because it's been a whipsaw back and forth. That's what I'm trying to do.
My only concern, Ms. Missit, is that our own consultant has said that if you put the site, the Leyland cypress under those lindens, that Leyland cypress won't survive.
They're staggered out. I was, what I was saying, they're not directly under them at this point. They're 20 feet, they're not disturbing the roots, and they're staggered out. I think, has the board been over to look at it? If you would just see, come have a look at this.
I don't know the first thing about trees, but I, you have to rely on the advice of the professionals that we have.
And this, to me, seems like it's more of a neighborly issue than a, than a planning board issue. I really think we've got substantial screening around it, and I think if you guys don't agree, I, I, I'm ready to say yes on this thing, so.
It sounds to me, John, and the, the two of you just go in the back room, you can come up with a satisfactory arrangement. I mean, you're willing to do what she, she wants and...
Or they said they would do?
Jesus.
That's, that's fine.
That's fine with me.
That's fine.
But how do we feel about getting the landscape architect, the licensed...
This board, excuse me, doesn't require that.
This board, it's not in our code, it's in the ARB.
But then it has to go back to the ARB because there will be changes?
That's not for us to say.
So Jane, I have an excuse. Can you, Ms. Missit, in the back room, dispose of this decision?
Yep.
So we're going to hold on that one?
If you would.
For a moment?
Just going to pause that. We're going to press pause.
So what are we doing?
You're going to get together and figure out what she wants.
Right this minute?
Right now, and then we'll come back and hopefully we'll, 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 she'll get her...
John, one key question.
What else are we going to talk about?
We've got, we have the next one.
Right, a public hearing.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Susan Stevenson, 84 Toilsom Lane. I've sat through a lot of these meetings and I'm just confounded by if, I realize it may not be your purview, that a certified landscape architect had to sign off on the plan, but as far as I can tell, no one has signed the plan that was required when the building, as a condition of the, of your, of Mr. Robinson's decision on the actual building permit. Now, and I think some of the problem is that that didn't ha, you know, that then somehow at one of these meetings, it came out that on a flag lot, you have to have the landscape plan before something else can happen? And that didn't happen. So there are a lot of these procedural situations that seem to have caused a lot of trouble and a lot of wasted time perhaps for you. And I, I just don't understand the enforcement part. Should, I mean, and, and people... Should, I mean, and, and people didn't recognize, I mean, no one did, I get it, that the flag lot, whatever, you have to have a landscape plan. So in a sense, maybe you shouldn't have looked at it until it went back to the other situation, which was the conditional before it ever reached you. I don't know. I don't know the protocol of all of that. But I feel, just as a member of the community, that somehow enforcement doesn't take place, it causes this big mess that's sad for all the people who live, including the builder, but also the neighbors. I don't know if the plans that are submitted are accurate, there's a lot of discussion of that, but I think that would be unfortunate if they aren't. And I, I find it really disturbing that in a, what should be a dignified board, that, that this kind of situation is coming up.
Well, you're talking about the, what you're talking about is something that the Architecture Review Board did or didn't do, not this board.
It was, yes.
And you're also talking about something the Building Department did or didn't do, not this board?
Right, I get that part. I'm not saying you did it wrong, I'm just saying, now we get to this situation, and it seems to be kind of a mess.
Well, I think you'd be better off talking to the Architecture Review Board and the Building Department, since they're the ones that didn't do what they were supposed to do, in your opinion.
Right, so how does it land in your lap? That's what I don't understand. How did it get here?
This is the last board in which the public has the opportunity to speak. That's what all this defaults to, Susan, it's a question of the last man standing.
Yeah, so what's the recourse?
Well, there, the recourse is maybe to have a legislative tightening of the laws, but we would like to think that reasonable people can fill in the gaps in the laws. Now, let's go back to the A or B. The A or B has a specific code, a specific provision that they requested of their own volition about 10 years ago to deal with landscaping issues, and it provides that they are entitled upon their request to have a landscaping plan signed by a licensed landscape architect. That's in that provision, it's not the planning law.
I understand that.
Okay, well, let me finish. So that's what they required in their decision. As you know, that board, nor any board here, has an enforcement power. If that's not fulfilled, there's nobody in the A or B or their council that can go out to a property owner three months later and say, "You didn't do this, therefore this board is gonna revoke something." Reliance there is on the building inspector to interpret these decisions, be aware of the provisions, and make sure they're enforced. So you have this area, like in the local government here, the town government, the county government, the state government, and the federal government, where different agencies have different qualifications, parameters of jurisdictions and not, and in a situation like this, you have a gray area and a gap. And that's what's happened here. It so happens, this board also has, in the zoning code, a provision where for a flag lot, the code says that no building permit can be issued until the planning board has signed off on a landscaping plan.
Right.
Well, it's up to the Building Department to refer those applications to the planning board, so they can decide upon them. Whether that was done here or not is not the parameter of this board tonight, it's to simply deal with what's in front of it. And I think, let me finish, John, John, let me finish.
The building inspector called Mr. Farrell and said-
John, let me, John, let me finish.
And in a situation here, that's not what this board is dealing with. The board is dealing with the fact that it's going to look at a landscape plan, and it has done so, I think, very admirably over the last eight or nine months. Mr. Bennett is right, it has been a moving target, and he's also correct in saying that it shouldn't be that an applicant proposes something, and then somebody else simply says, "Well, I don't like it, go do something else to make it better."
I, I agree.
Okay, so that's where we are. There's no puzzle.
But to me, I'm just, for instance, if I were accepted at college, but I flunked gym, and it was conditional that I take gym or I'm not getting in, that's how I look at conditional. You know, when you get there and they say, "Well, where's the slip?"
But you may have a 55 mile an hour speed limit on the road, and somebody passes you going 80.
No, I don't, it's not the same, because it's written.
And you say, "Well, gee, why, why isn't the law being enforced? Because there was no policeman there to enforce it."
No, but this is, but, okay, I, kind of, but in this case, it was written down, this is a specific situation, and it's just brought up all these issues.
What was written down? What was written down? You just said it was written down.
That it's conditional upon a signed architect, architect signing off.
That's the, the A or B's domain, not this board.
Right, I understand it's not your domain, I just don't know how it got here, that's what I was saying.
It got here because there is also a provision in the Village Code that says-
The land-
On a flag lot.
On a flag lot, right.
On a flag lot.
I understand that too.
Okay, well, that's why it's here. It's just, oh, that's coincidental. If this wasn't a flag lot, this wouldn't be the case.
You wouldn't be hearing it.
Because the planning board has no review over a single-family dwelling lot.
Okay, thank you.
So it's just a coincidence of that little provision.
What I'm trying to wrap my head around is, is that the-
If it's referred back, they'll deal with it. If it's referred back, they'll deal with it.
So it's always gonna be a conditional decision?
It's a condition subsequent, Barbara, not a condition precedent.
But the landscape part?
It's a condition subsequent to the decision.
The A or B approved a landscape plan. The plan came before this board. You didn't like the plan that was approved, you wanted changes made, but by the very fact that they make changes, according to your argument, it would then have to go back to the A or B again, which doesn't really, it's kind of puts the applicant in a catch 22, that if they agree to what you want them to do, then all of a sudden they've changed the plan, and it's gotta go back to Curtis Highsmith again. So I'm not really, I think once-
I'm just reading what it says.
Yeah, but I don't see how they're, they're trying to accommodate you by making a change, and if then they make the change, then it's gotta go back to the A or B again?
They didn't, they didn't accommodate, the written decision was waiting for a landscape that was signed off by a licensed landscape architect.
Condition subsequent.
It's still, it's waiting for that. We do not have that planned, do we?
It's a condition subsequent, which means that, doesn't mean you can't start building. It means that the landscape plan that's actually put in has, has to be approved, but doesn't say you can't start building. It's a condition subsequent.
The planning, there's one, and the Village Code does say that.
Well, I-
The flagpole lot, John.
All right, and, and the reason, one of the reasons we're here is that Mr. Foster called up Mr. Farrell and said, "Can you go to the Building Department, oh, excuse me, the Planning Board, and please try to get this all resolved? Would you please hold construction until that happens? No stop work order or anything like that?" And Mr. Farrell agreed. So here I am in a situation where Mr. Farrell willingly agreed to this, there's no stop work order, it was a valid permit, which a judge refused to, to stop, it's subject to a condition subsequent after, meaning, meaning after. So I, we're gonna wait another month to get this done? You don't, I, I can, you know, I, you don't have anything in your code that talks about a licensed landscape architect. Yes, there's a condition subsequent in the building permit, which, again, a judge has refused to stop, okay, at the request of some of the neighbors, which has that. I would simply like to get this done. It gets curiouser and curiouser, I'm simply trying to get it done. Have we, Jane? Have we been able to make any?
Because I'm listening, this hearing is still going on, and I'm very much part of this hearing. So then we're going to do the-
Have we been able to reach any accommodation?
We have to discuss it, yeah.
I think it's fair that I get to remain to hear what else goes on in this public meeting.
We're putting it on hold for the moment.
Thank you.
We're gonna talk about the Real Estate Organization Belgium's landscape.
Can I have one of my speech things back, because I've managed to misplace?
What would you like?
One of the things I passed out to you, just because it has a letter in it that I've managed to misplace somehow.
There you go.
Thank you, thanks a lot.
I know. Oh, well, you have 10 minutes.
I saw one. We do have someone someplace.
I gave it back.
2072, we have 2072 someplace.
Oh, it has, oh, okay.
Bennett, are you representing the Real Estate Organization of Belgium?
Yes, I, I call it Rob for short.
I had 2072 someplace, but I don't see it.
Should I proceed?
Yes.
Okay. The la, at the work session, we discussed the fact that this is a flagpole, and what we did was we screened the easterly side, no, southerly side, southerly side of the flagpole with privet. And that seemed to be fine with the board. And then we did receive a memo dated September 2nd, 2014, from Laura Urbat at Nelson Pope. "I reviewed the right-of-way drive landscape plan for the above- referenced property prepared by area's design, and find that it meets the intent of providing screening for the flagpole lot." And then, a somewhat curious note, I thought, and I'll have Tim explain more, it is noted that there's, there is a privet variety that is considered an invasive species and is included on the Suffolk County Do Not Sell list, although some local nurseries have been found to carry this variety. An alternate species should be installed, and I think there was a little bit of confusion when we read that. Tim, you want to explain to the board?
Well, there is, excuse me. There is a law that, that is on the books about invasive species directing nurseries not to grow or sell it, but every nursery out here on the east end grows and sells privet.
This very species, it's privet.
It's privet. And that's what we have throughout the Village of Southampton, so.
And that's all we're planting here.
And there's actually privet on the north side of this right-of-way that's already existing, so.
What's the name of the species, Tim? You know?
Yeah, it's the ovalefolium. And this is, we were gonna put, oh, it's trusifolium is the, what's on the, the Do Not Sell list.
So, this isn't trusifolium though, is it?
I don't believe we did, we did that. We just said privet.
Privet hedge.
Yeah, we just said privet. So we'll go ovalefolium, and we'll be fine, so.
So which one is the invasive? She said that then ovalefolium was-
Trusifolium.
Trusifolium is invasive. It says here, the obtusifolium-
Obtusifolium.
Yeah, obtusifolium is on the Do Not Sell list. Right?
That's the one that Laura sent me, so.
Yeah.
We need ovalefolium.
Yeah, ovalefolium.
As long as it was, instead of having you change the plan and call out the, the name of the privet, it was just, please use the one that's not invasive.
Right, the ovalefolium.
So you don't have to change the plan, I would recommend, I mean, as long as, I mean-
You can make it part of the approval.
Yeah, this provides the screening that, that's needed, and I figured, why waste the paper and have them revise it and submit 12 copies of this, when, as long as there's an understanding, and that's part of the approval, then, you know, that's, this is fine.
And you're okay with everything else?
Yeah, and the rest of the landscape plan was fine, as long as the neighbor's okay, I mean, that we did, and so there's maybe be a comment from the neighbor, but we did have, we looked at the rest of it as well.
And what I did, just for purposes of clarity, we have this, I'm sorry, we, remember the landscape, the landscaping was, a plan was, was put on another map-
Right.
-because that got the ZBA approval. So we put that, we put that very same approval, which has bunches of trees on this sheet for it, so that it's all there on one sheet.
Oh, so that's in this, this in this plan?
Yeah, but it doesn't change anything.
Okay.
It, it shows, what it did is we showed the, this screening, which you, which the memo is fine with, subject to putting the California privet there, and we showed these trees, which we already had on there.
Well, we preferred, because the other one was like six sheets and very thick, so this is-
That's because it, that's because it contained the wetlands restoration and all that, so.
So it's a-
So we put it all on one sheet.
I represent the neighbor to the south, Tim Cronin and Alana Cronin. And their problem is this. You have just approved tonight a lotline modification that approves the merger of a wide strip. The, the strip that's next to this flagpole is 30.18 feet wide. The flagpole itself is wider than most flagpoles, it's 25.16 feet wide. So the total width of that combined merged strip is 55.34 feet wide. My client to the south has a proposal in front of him that carves, that leaves three feet for this privet hedge that's gonna go along, and then the driveway is right butt up against that three feet. And then, to the north of that, there's eight feet that is next to no neighbor whatsoever that is left vacant, and then beyond that, there's the 30.18 feet. As it stands, if you approve this plan tonight, he will have two driveways, side by side, running parallel, all the way up, with one 14-foot wide driveway, three feet from my client's property line. It doesn't need to be like that. Plus, every single large mature tree, and there are three of them that are large trees, are gonna be destroyed to do this. And it doesn't, it doesn't seem at all, in keeping with the spirit of the law, to have two side-by-side driveways, when there's obviously a way that one driveway could be made to be more attractive and leave more vegetation along the south side. And let me just tell you, there's a lot of vegetation that's being destroyed here, not only three very large mature trees, but that whole entire flagpole strip is, is really vegetated. It's all gonna be ripped out. For what?
Can I respond?
Yep.
Can I respond? Ms. Riley's recitation of the facts is not only misleading, but full of half-truths, and I'm gonna tell you why, and it's very annoying, and she knows better, because I've explained the whole situation to her. You approved a lotline modification this evening, but the property hasn't closed, and not only does that lotline modification need approval from you, but it needs approval from the village trustees, and I'll explain to you why. Let alone the fact that this is my 20-foot access right here, which I own fee title to own, and I'm entitled to improve in the way, in the way I want, as long as I provide screening, okay? This is a piece of property that Mr. Hivart, who owns the, this lot here, has a right-of-way over. However, when Mr. Meltzer, who, the lotline division, modification is happening with, got the zoning board of appeals about 20 years ago to approve his tenants' court, he put a scenic easement over the entire 30 feet. The entire 30 feet, all the way out to First Neck Lane. Obviously, never giving anyone a title certification, showing that there was a right-of-way on this property. So Mr. Hivart's acquisition of this is sub, is subject not only, as per contract, Mr. Flanagan represents Mr. Meltzer, but is subject not only to this lotline modification, but is also, it's also subject to the village trustees agreeing to subordinate to this right-of-way. That may or may not happen. And in the meantime, I'm entitled to go forward with the building of this house, which has Suffolk County Health Department approval, zoning board of appeals approval, architecture review board approval, every single thing, except your review of screening. That's what you're here to review, the screening on this flagpole lot, and this flagpole only. Because there is a, which Ms. Riley is extremely well aware of, there is a village scenic easement on this entire piece of property, which creates, creates a cloud of title on the use of this right-of-way. And also, the contract for Mr. Meltzer to obtain this is subject to the village trustees agreeing to subordinate. So this may not happen, but I'll be darned if I'm gonna sit here and wait to see if this happens. It may happen in two months, it may happen in eight months, and it may happen in a year, but nothing says that I have to sit here and wait to start construction on this house, which has Health Department approval, wetlands approval, ZBA approval, A or B approval. So that's a very contentious, misleading statement of half the facts here. I'm entitled to use this driveway, this 20-foot flagstrip as a matter of law. This is the flagstrip that gives access to the property. These two lots were owned in tandem, so it wasn't an issue until they were split apart. The screening your expert has found is adequate. That's what you're here to decide. And I would ask you to give the approval tonight, because I would like to start construction on this house, which has been held in limbo pending, again, sound familiar, screening of the flagpole lot. This is a 20-foot flagpole, which have the absolute right, if it had the most beautiful trees in the world, I would have the absolute right, excuse me, to take every single- trees in the world, I would have the absolute right, excuse me, to take every single one of them down to gain access to this. This is the legal fee title into this building lot.
I'd like to respond. First of all, there is, my suggestion here would be to do something that's a little bit out of the box, to do something that's conditioned possibly on his getting the permission that he needs from the board of trustees. And let me be more specific. There's nothing to stop this construction from going forward with, with a sort of, perhaps a conditional approval, that says that as long as he can continue using the right-of-way on the Meltzer strip, which he has a right-of-way over, which, which is on the records, he can use that. He can use that, and if, if, if the thing falls through with the scenic easement and he's not allowed ultimately to use that as a right-of-way permanently, which he has been allowed to use up till now, then in that event, perhaps a clearing of the flagpole strip, according to this plan, could, could go forward. But if it does go forward, it seems to me that we ought to be able to leave more of a buffer on the south side and move it more toward the north or toward the center even, so that it's a little bit fairer.
You're not here to decide where my driveway goes. You're, that's not what your site plan purview is. You're here to decide how the driveway, where I choose to provide it, which is a matter of law, can be right up to the property line, how, whether or not it's screened. Your consultant has said that it's screened. Mr. Hivart may decide, if the village trustees approve this, to simply use this entire area for screening to the neighbors. He may decide he wants his driveway here. You're not here to tell me where to put my driveway. You're here to tell me whether or not it's adequately screened. And you can't condition some approval upon something that may or may not happen. It's cumbersome, it's inappropriate. You're here for one reason. Has this been adequately screened? I have the absolute right to use this. I could cut it all down tomorrow. Your quest, your jurisdiction is, has it been adequately screened? Your consultant has said that it's been adequately screened. I say it's been adequately screened. It's screened in the same way that you have approved innumerable flagpole lots. We've put privet here. You had a concern about the species. We've decided that we'll make sure that it's not the species that's on the Suffolk County no-buy list, which are, by the way, many are. If any of you have burning bush, you better take them out, because that's on the Suffolk County no-buy list as well. The burning bush, yes. Okay. So, but let's not argue that point. We'll be more than happy to take the, to use the California privet, which is the privet that you see. You know, this, this, this is, this is, this sort of what-if stuff has no business before your board. Have I adequately screened this? Yes.
Adequate screening is a subjective balancing test that has to be done on a case-by-case basis. What's adequate in one neighborhood for a short flaglot that is only 20 feet wide is going to be a different answer than what's adequate on, on something that may end up being 55 feet wide is at least more than 25 feet wide and, and runs for the entire length of my client's property at a considerable length. I think three feet deep of one row of privet hedge is not adequate under these circumstances. You can't take, take a one, one-size-fits-all approach to these things.
It's not 55 feet. What you're looking at right now is this flagpole, right here. That's it. We've screened it as, as this board has always required us to, to screen it. And I don't know why there's any different standard whatsoever based upon something that may or may not happen. So I would ask you to approve this so that instead of being held up for three months on this approval, I can get going on this house, which again, has wetlands approval. Mr. Voorhees was very, very, very complimentary about the significant landscape and wetlands restoration that's happened, as was the zoning board of appeals. The architectural review board could not have been happier at the house. We have health department approval. I'd like to start building.
I don't see, I don't think that Mr. Cronin has any objection to his starting to build if he will agree to use the right-of-way, that he has a perfect right to use for the time being. And if that right-of-way is not able to be used later, then come back.
No, you can't.
It doesn't stop you from building.
You don't have the authority to tell me that I can or can't use a right-of-way. This is my fee access in here. If I want to cut all this down, and I'd be very careful, because if he wants to cut all this down tomorrow, he can do so. You just have to tell me how to screen it. What in God's name are we talking about here? I've done what the code says I'm supposed to, and your, your professionals, as you talked about before in the last application, have told you that this is adequate. I would ask you simply to approve this. Kathy?
I mean, it is true that the bill doesn't, it doesn't provide setbacks requirements for the driveway. A driveway could be right up against the property line, except in this case that there has to be area left for screening. And Lara did look at it and feel that three feet is adequate. Whether it's fair or, you know, makes sense as far as the setbacks, that's not what she was reviewing. So it's, you know, it's.
So she's okay with the screening?
She's fine with the screening, yeah.
Is this more a neighborhood, neighbor thing, dislike the last one?
It seems like it.
I mean, doesn't.
It seems like all these are.
I mean, ideally, that what, what Ms. Riley, she'll work in the future, but if not, I can understand where, you know, it's not for this board to.
Right.
Put a condition on, and I agree with that. So, do you agree, Bill?
I think the comment that, first of all, John's comment is, is correct, that, you know, ordinarily, if you've got a, the zoning code allows a driveway to go right up to the property line. However, if you've got a provision that says something has to be screened, and you want to put a driveway right up to the property line, you obviously can't screen it. So it seems there is, I think there is an implication here in the spirit of the interpretation that the board does have the power to change a driveway configuration, maybe bend it around an existing tree or do something else to provide for the screening. So I think that's my legal analysis of it, but here's a situation where the consultant report says the screening is minimal and it's adequate. The neighbor is saying, well, can you do something for me that's, that's a little better than adequate or minimal? And that's where this now seems to rest. Given the time constraints, I, you've got to be some degree sympathetic for the applicant because he'd like to move on with this. The consult has said that it's minimal and acceptable. One might think, though, that there might be some reconsideration of this, you know, if the trustees do waive the easement and the owner then has 55 feet in which to, you know, be a little more generous with whatever is going on there.
I have pledged to Ms. Riley and to her client that if that happens, I mean, the guy's not going to want, you could land an airplane on 50 feet. He's not going to want to make a 50-foot driveway. If anything, it'll meander.
Right.
And we'll be back here, but in the interim, I don't have that, so I need this approval to move forward. Now, you have six-foot-high privet, privet rose.
Very quickly. I'll make a motion at the request of the applicant to approve the landscape plan submitted and approved by our consultants.
Can we just give a date of this plan? The upland planting plan and right-of-way drive site plan.
Where's your date, Tim?
Last revised, August 28, 2014. The plan merk date, the merk date of the plan.
I'll second that.
Two seconds.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
He said aye.
Thank you. Want more comments, please?
Aye, you should submit the rest of the village. I feel we're in front of the stamping.
Okay.
Before you start anything else, I think you better.
Put away.
Time out.
Ready?
They all went down there.
Fired up.
So who are we talking about now?
Ask them. Oh, was there an extra?
Gaping Zoo, 32 Pheasant Lane.
I think Warren has them. They went down here. A ball with a bone needle.
How many feet of screening have you got?
He's live.
Okay.
Okay. Hi, I'm John Hemmelsbach, architect. I'm representing.
And by the way, we are in favor of that.
David Zoo's property of 32 Pheasant. We were here at the last work session, and we got our letter from Laura, from Nelson and Pope, as to her suggestions of what to do for the landscape screening on the flaglot. So we've provided those changes and her suggestions. I called Lara and discussed that whole issue of the invasive privet versus what was the one that's required, and that's the one that's on there. I wrote the name on all sides. So her comments in general were the screening along the south side of the flagpole, the hedge was in poor condition and sparse. That was the neighbor to the south on their flagpole section. So when I was there, it seemed pretty thick and overgrown, as did much of the property. But I indicate on there where we can add in some three-to-four-foot privets to sort of fill in along that area. We have a 14-foot, we have a 20-foot flagpole, so we have three feet on either side, and we have a 14-foot driveway. So we're providing the screening on the south side and also along the north side of the flag of the lot and the west side and the south side, which we show on all three sides that she suggested we do. So we added all those in. We also took into account, because the neighbor was expressed concern about protecting her hedge, which is that south side, which the consultant to the village said is sparse and in poor condition, but we did take a provision to sort of protect the corner of where the flagpole meets the flag of the lot at her point of property, just because of construction access. We wanted to limit any disturbance across that corner. So we show a 60-foot construction-limiting fence and a set of hay bales along the property line, just to ensure protection. Because the north side of the flagpole is fine, it's in good condition, it's thick. And obviously, we need to add some more. So we've done that. And I think that that's pretty much all that was asked for us to do. We provided a lot of drainage for the flag and the driveway along that flagpole section, which we wanted to retain any water from running off, so we tried to address that issue too, which is part of the calculations and all the drywall computations for the property.
And there's, there's already existing privet to the north and to the south of the driveway?
Of the driveway, yeah.
And then you're adding another three feet?
Where Lara, Lara said, you know, it's sparse in location, so fill in, so we have no problem doing that with a three-foot to four-foot privet in section.
So you're filling in north of where the neighbor's is, or are you going to try to kind of?
Right. Wherever it's on our property, where we can. You know, it was pretty overgrown when I saw it, but it's been pruned back and maintained by the neighbor. So that was her, you know, main condition was that one, so we seem to address that. And all along the south side of the flag has no privet, just overgrown brush and everything. So we're going to provide on all three sides.
Okay. So the, the construction fence that you're showing is right at the same place where you're going to fill in, so.
Well, that's just to protect.
The privet hedge is the last thing you're going to do then?
Yeah. I think so, because it's going to be a corner where trucks are turning and trying to come in, and that was one of the neighbor's concerns at the ARB meeting where we met, so we tried to address that right away.
And then after you take the hay bales and fence down, after construction, you'll fill in that?
I think that's when we have to do it, you know, and so the privet can take hold without any disturbance, you know. I think that makes more sense.
Even after the driveway goes in?
Yeah. Lot of construction. We're ways away from construction or anything.
Privet on this lot. Privet on this lot, and then he's adding privet in between.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Beth Treadway, and I am that neighbor on the south side. And I do have a letter that I submitted via email earlier today, but that I would like to have go into the record. I would be the first to admit that the privet on the southerly side is not in good shape. We have struggled for 35 years with flooding from this driveway. And my concerns, what I lay out in the letter, are my concerns about this flooding. We do have specimen plantings, Japanese maples, and a 50-foot-tall liberty elm, not subject to the Dutch elm disease, planted along that property line. Our privet has been extensively trimmed back. I won't say, I mean, is it sparse? Yes, because it's been trimmed back, because we want to put it in the best possible shape before the construction begins. And in my letter, I ask for a chain-link construction fence along that narrow driveway, and that that be before construction begins and until a CO is issued. And that the present elevation of the driveway, that a topographical survey be done so that the present elevation of the driveway is not raised up, and that in fact, the ultimate finished driveway is at least one level below, one inch below the current elevation. With a long flaglot driveway, there has to be drainage within that driveway, and it has to be low enough that when it goes over the cob, or that it really can't go over the cobblestones and flood neighbor's property. What I've heard tonight is the emphasis on drainage being within the property, and that's really all we're asking for. So.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I'd just like to mention that we did take that into account as far as the drainage. We put trials at the end of the long.
What is there now?
Nothing. It's just a, there's no driveway there, it's just a flaglot. Woods, just brush and grass, that's all that's there. So, and it's a relatively level pitch, so I'm a little bit apprehensive about saying it should be an inch lower or whatever. It's just should be pitched to the drywells, which are with catch basins in the driveway, pitched to them, and it shows it clearly on the plan, which way I'm pitching it.
Did you do a Belgian block detail?
There will be a Belgian block edging, naturally, yes.
Right, I see. It says it's six-inch Belgian block. Is that six inches above the pavement?
No, it's, this is six-inch block. It's at, you know.
So how high above the pavements are going to be, do you know?
Probably three inches above the pavement. It's exposed, three inches down, three inches up, so.
Is this going to be gravel, though, or is there?
Yeah, it's a gravel.
It says pervious, yeah.
Pervious gravel driveway, which is sort of a typical detail.
It's like blacktop, so.
Well, you know, driveway in general, though, I think we're pitching it, we're taking into consideration. I definitely think we've gone to the extent of protecting 60 feet of fence. I can't ask my client to put restraint on him to have a chain link for 1,000 feet from the flaglot down the other flag. I think it's very excessive to do a construction fence in areas that aren't going to be really impacted.
That seems reasonable. And that corner, yes, is important.
Yeah, in the corner, 60, 60 feet is, I think it's, with the hay bales, I think it's protective enough for that area.
So it extends from here to here?
Here, 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 60, this is 60 feet.
What is this?
This is just the, this is the, that's the water line. Yeah.
Oh, it's just drywall, one of the, two, not driveway, one of the driveway.
It's the water line.
Yeah.
How does the water get from here on the end?
Well, here, this is, this is, this is the high point. That's the high point, and this is going to pitch down.
I'm going to see this one. Can I just take? So it's, it's in this area, the fence would be to this corner, so that when the trucks come in and out. come in and out, then. And then you're suggesting a pile of hay bales in that corner?
Well, actually, I have it, well, we can, we can-
It's going to extend up here, huh?
It's basically here, because once they enter their property, they're in their property proper, so.
And what about when they leave the property?
No, I'm saying, the only time they're going to impact you is on that turn, on that 90-degree.
Okay, okay.
So, I think that's appropriate for that corner, you know. I just, we're providing screening all this, the south, the east. This is, that's yours already. And here we're filling.
Do we have any elevations at all?
On the survey, there's probably denim elevations.
How did, did you look at the drainage?
I did.
Contours?
It's pretty flat. I'd have to say it's a very flat lot. Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I would make mention of one other thing. We have had this property for 33 years. Along our, let me think, along our easterly border, the previous owner, who, I think the family house is still up on 10th, and used this lot as a dumping ground. That border is filled with rock and cement.
On your property or on this property?
On this property. Not on the property.
Nice to know.
But my husband spoke to the previous owner, who didn't live on the property, obviously. Ignored it. He said he had no idea who was dumping there, so both of them saw him, and his husband threatened to go to the village. Finally, the dumping stopped. But tearing that property off and the protection of our hedges along that property is not going to be an easy job. It is the reason why we requested a construction fence along that border of our property. And the dumping took place about 1990, and it was over a series of years. You know the files there that I'm talking up here?
I just know there's a lot of overgrowth, you know, it's very grown over, so, you know.
Piles of rocks.
Well, if they're building a new house, and a tennis court, and a spa, and a pool, and a fire pit, I'm sure they'll take the rubble out when they're building.
As long as it's not like, it's filled in a lake.
As long as taking the rubble out doesn't destroy our hedges.
No, I hear you.
Well, beyond their property, we're not going on to their property. It'll be within our property limits, so whatever we do is going to be, you know, work from that angle. It has to be, you know. We're not adding any privet to that, her easterly or our westerly border, because whatever's there is there.
And you'll-
I mean, ultimately, your recourse, if they damage your property, is to sue him.
Well, I mean, can you represent, can you-
I mean, not the way you want to do it.
Yeah, I mean, can you represent that if you damage their bushes and taking out this, you'll replace them?
You know, I think that my client would be happy to implement anything that, you know, is obviously something that they damaged, obviously, but that's under intent, is to go ahead and build a house and put in a tennis court and pool.
I mean, a construction fence, you know, maybe not a chain-linking, maybe just a construction fence or-
Yeah, yeah, we could do any protective barrier fence.
I don't think he's a conscience.
We'd get staked out anyway, the surveyor has to give us a line, which is within the hedge though. I mean, it's literally-
Not really, no. Our hedges are 18 inches in from our property line.
But I'm saying, they've grown, they're not just then-
No, the survey shows that, and we had, we had the exterior, we did not have the exterior of those hedges trimmed this year. We had the exterior of those hedges trimmed last year.
Kathy, do you need additional time to review this?
Yes.
Yes.
And do you have a survey that has any elevations on it?
Survey was issued today, too. They dropped it off the pack. It should be in the package.
Okay.
You had it from the tennis court, so it's in there.
For your information generally, members of the board, you might be interested to know that the law in the state of New York is that an upland property owner owes no right to a lowerland property owner for water runoff.
Really?
Really. It's, this is a former potato field, it's pretty flat. I'd be more concerned about whether the driveway was going to be pervious and remain pervious. How is it that you say there's so much flooding on your property from this property?
No, no, no. What I am suggesting is that it is a low-lying area in general.
What do you mean, low-lying relative to what?
Relative to other parts of the property.
Well, we're just talking about the flag here. Your property is lower than this flag access?
I would say that the, that the levels are undulating in that area. And I'll tell you what, as long as the driveway is not raised up, you have no problem. If in fact, the driveway is then raised up, that will be a problem, and that's why the topographical survey to determine the level is-
If the driveway is raised up, assuming for, sake of, assuming for the sake of discussion, if the driveway were raised and bordered by Belgian block and drained, how would that much water get onto your property?
We hope it won't. When you have a 20-foot-wide flaglot and you're next to it, are you going to be concerned? Yeah, you're going to be concerned.
20 feet wide?
Is that what it is?
20 feet of flag, but our driveway's only 14. So, we have three feet of, you know, planted-
But it's a pervious driveway, so it's going to drain on its own, plus there's drains at each end. They've got Belgian block raised curbs to contain everything. I don't think you're, I don't think you're going to see any water runoff, yeah.
It's a very low area.
Okay. Okay. I'll make a, make a motion at the request of the applicant to adjourn for all purposes the 32 Pheasant Lane application.
Great. Thank you.
Second over here.
Aye.
Aye.
So, the 46 McGee Street site plan review has been adjourned to October work session, leaving us to return to 483 Hillstaff.
Jane Kratz, again, for the applicant. I've conferred with Ms. Missitt, and we have a plan that we all agree to. We've initialed certain changes to the most recent iteration, and if the board would consider approving this initialed plan, I will file it with you and then obtain a copy for my records and one for Mrs. Missitt in the morning. We are preserving all of the linden trees despite my comments earlier today. We will attempt to stagger some of the hemlocks slightly. We are going to, we've agreed on this plan to clean and trim up the canopies of the existing lindens. Mrs. Missitt has initialed that. We are removing two black walnuts that aren't shown on the plan, because they're being removed, and she has initialed that. And where we had suggested Canadian hemlock nearer to the southerly side of the property, Ms. Missitt would prefer Leyland Cypress, so in that location, we've gone back to Leyland Cypress.
Thank you.
I think it's as best we can all do. Appreciate the time.
I will make a motion at the request of the applicant. Yes, he's here. Yes, right here.
And you're okay with this?
I'm agreed. Thank you.
Okay, great.
We'll make a motion at the request of the applicant to approve the initialed site plan subsequent to the submission of a final plan.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, members of the board.
Good night. Thank you.
Good night.
So, that one should be sacred plan, should get stamped in?
Well done. And that has to stamp that one in, and then you can get a copy of that one. The signed and stamped one. As you two, Ms. Missitt, you can get a copy of that tomorrow at the village apartment.
Okay. I don't want this one stamped.
Is it too early to adjourn?
Not first thing in the morning.
Just a little, just a little house cleaning here, and then we can go.
These things will still be sitting here.
It's too early.
Does the board feel about canceling the December 29 work session and holding a joint work session public meeting on January 5?
I'm all in favor of that.
It's not a holy day of November.
It is. It is.
Did we vote on that, or we just decide we want to do it?
Yeah, well, I'll make a motion to cancel the December 29, 2014 work session, hold a combined work session and public meeting on January 5, 2015.
How's that going? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Aye.
I haven't read those.
You haven't read the minutes yet.
No. I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.